Council meeting for March.
This meeting is being recorded.
It's hard to believe it's March already and it's almost, it'll be gone before we know it. As we always do, we start our meetings off with a moment of silence. There's a lot to be thankful for. There's still a lot of things that are going on in our world and it looks like we're starting to get a handle on the COVID piece of our concern, but the reality of it is there's lots still to be concerned about. So let's do a moment of silence, please. Okay, thank you everybody. Let's call the meeting order. Mike, you want to do roll call?
Sure thing. President Bender.
Here.
Counselor Platt.
Here.
Counselor Thompson.
Here.
Counselor Moore. Counselor Moore.
Here.
Counselor Paulson.
Here.
And we have Counselor Trolley.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
And Mayor Gibson.
Yeah.
Did I get everybody?
I think you did.
All right.
All right. Thank you all for being here.
Mayor, point of order, can I just?
Okay, go ahead, Mike. I'm sorry.
Do any agenda additions, tractions, things of that nature? I think we have one missed presentation with President Lynn Peterson from Metro that was not on the agenda.
But she is definitely on.
Right. So where do we want to add her?
Let's do the, I would think that it would be a good idea, this is my feeling on this, is to let President Peterson go first and then right after that, the Washington County presentation. Can we do that?
Sure. So as a point of order, can we get motion? One second.
I said move.
Second.
A favor?
I got it.
I got clarification on a second.
Okay. All right. That sounds good.
Go ahead, Micah and Kate. So who wants it? Hey, we'll take Kate.
Okay. All right, we're good?
Yep.
Okay, real quick, we need to approve of minutes from June 17th, 2020, February 10th, 2021, and February 17th, 2021.
Mr. Mayor, I need to make a correction on, on one of the minutes, Counselor Paulson's name is spelt with an O, not an E. Or I'm sorry, with an E, not an O.
Okay. I'm sure Micah appreciates that.
It's Ronnie. It's a, we'll work it out.
Okay. All right. So we need motions to approve those minutes.
I will move to approve the minutes. I don't have the dates in front of me. What are the dates, Mike?
June 17th, February 10th, and February 17th.
Those minutes with the amended change to reflect Counselor Paulson's correct spelling of his name.
With an E-N.
Second.
Okay, Micah seconded it and I think we're good to go. All in favor? Show of hands.
Dave, I can't see you, but I'm assuming you're voting in favor. I've got everybody else.
Hi. Hi.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Let's not move on. We are honored tonight to have President of Metro Lynn Peterson and I see Garrett Rosenthal on as well. So we're gonna turn it over to you guys. I'm really, really excited to have you guys on board. So thank you for coming.
Well, thank you for having us, Mayor, council members. Lynn Peterson, Metro Council President for the record, along with Counselor Rosenthal. Just wanted to say how honored I am to be with you, having been former Lake Oswego City Councilor and Sheriff Clackamas County. I just want to say thank you for all the work that you do at the, at the local level, on the ground, as close to the people as you can get. And so I just want to say thank you. Counselor Rosenthal, do you have any opening comments? Want to come off mute?
Nothing other than it's nice to see the council again. I'm pleased to be with them and I enjoy it.
Awesome. Thank you. Well, we do have a quick presentation and really the whole, the only point of the presentation is just to remind people of everything that Metro does. A lot of things we touch and talk to you a lot about and the other things we don't. And then just a quick kind of embodied in there, a quick update on the regional investment strategies work that we have all been doing as a region together with the big bond measures and the big lifts. So if we could bring up the PowerPoint, that would be great. We don't actually need it. I can just go through it. Oh, there it is. Awesome. Look, even get thanked. Can we just, can we put it on just the slide without the notes?
Ronnie, you're muted, but try to slideshow.
I'm on slideshow on my screen.
Oh.
Okay. Well, that's, no worries. You all can just, you know, read along with me. So why don't we go to the next slide? Just to remind you, there's about five lines of business at Metro now. And if the slideshow is not going to work, we can just turn it off. There we go. Let's not worry about it, okay? Much appreciated. So there's five lines of business at Metro now. When we were first created, there were four. Many of you know a lot of them, but the, the main four were a regional park system, the venues that we manage, the waste stream management and regulation, as well as long-range regional transportation planning. The big one that's been added that we are just going to generally call for this presentation, affordable housing and supportive housing services. Thank you, Ronnie. Next slide. Next slide. Awesome. The Oregon Zoo is part of our venues. Good job, everybody. The Oregon Zoo is a big part of what we do in our venues, as you know, and it's been open a lot of the time of COVID, which is great. We did have to shut it down at the very beginning of COVID to make sure that we're keeping both our employees as well as the animals safe because there, as you recall, there are a lot of questions about at the beginning whether it would even be transferred to animals. So we wanted to make sure everybody was safe. A lot of you have probably already seen our new, our newish six acre elephant lands habitat, but we will be opening up the Polar Passage and Nora has, is at home. If you'll recall, she came to us as a cub. She started growing up, then she had to go and spend some time elsewhere while we redid her habitat and she is now back. We are also a national leader in condor conservation, which is actually located in Clackamas County in a very secret location because they need very, very quiet conditions and very safe conditions. But they have been brought back from the edge of extension, which is exciting. Next. You know that we manage Portland's Five Center for the Arts. We do not, we don't not own them. We operate and maintain them. The Arlene Schnitzer Concert Hall, the Colorado Torium, the Newmark Theater, the British Theater, and the Wendenstad Theater, all of which we had to close and are still closed, and including the Oregon Convention Center that we'll talk about and the Expo. We had to lay off 750 people three weeks after COVID hit because obviously if there's no revenue coming in, there's no work, there's no way to pay the workforce and we hope to have them all come back as soon as possible and start bringing people back into this wonderful region when it's safe and get, get our tourism industry up and going again. Next. In the meantime, the Expo and Convention Center have been doing a lot during COVID while they have not been hosting conferences or the AKC kennel type of thing or the Home and Garden Show. We have been able to host the Red Cross staging during the wildfires, as well as the Oregon Convention Center was an emergency shelter for the Clackamas County fire evacuees, as well as homeless shelter. When we need, when Multloma County needed more spacing for existing homeless shelter beds, we have stood up several times now for homeless shelter. Both the Expo and OCC hosted COVID-19 testing and some of you may have been able to get tested out there, but also we are now part of the mass vaccination site and I hear nothing but good things coming, coming back to us about the efficiency at which those four hospital systems have managed to put, put a lot of people through on a daily basis, up to 6,000 people a day to get vaccination. So we're very proud of the work that our folks have done alongside the four hospital systems. Next. Again, you, you as a city have the main contract with the, with the haulers to actually pick up the garbage, but then once that garbage gets into the haulers, they take it to a transfer station. We regulate the transfer stations as well as having two transfer stations that are public, the Oregon City and the one in the Northwest Industrial Area, and looking to cite some sort of transfer station out on the west side to make it easier for a range of things, including recycling and food scraps. And we also make system investments as a partner with our private industries. When it comes to recycling, we do a lot of innovation grants to be able to make sure that we are keeping up with the need for recycling within the system, especially after China no longer accepted our, our dirty recycling. So, next. And then our long-range planning, something that you are all completely aware of is our work on the urban growth boundary every five years into the urban areas. And then, then you pick up the rest of the pieces and run with how to actually plan a complete community. So we thank you for that work. We also do the transportation planning and we can talk a little bit about the transportation package and what that looks like going forward because there's a lot in there for Washington County. And then we have been working obviously on limiting pollution from the transportation system as a, as a whole in terms of reducing vehicle miles traveled, which means what you exactly have been doing, which is trying to make sure that there are more services located closer to more people so they don't have to drive so far to get their daily needs met, or even to get to work. Next. One part of this that we are really getting deep into is on the economic development side of things because basically all of this is part of the economic development of our region, but very specifically is investing in working families. We have our, our construction careers pathway program that is specifically looking at large capital projects across the entirety of the public realm, about $2 billion worth of work over the next several years to make sure that we are all holding ourselves to a very high standard on apprenticeship hours so that we can actually get people through the apprenticeship program and the journey level and really making sure that women and our BIPOC community members are part of that effort in a big way because they, they have been not as well represented within the construction industry as they should. So that will be part of how we help promote our economic recovery moving forward. Next. We have our affordable housing bond measure that was passed by the voters and I want to thank the voters for passing that at 67%, $652.8 million in November 2018. We have with our seven housing authorities in the region, the three counties and four cities that are eligible, we've gotten 34% of the money out the door, but we have already met 54% of the goal. So of the 3,900 units that we promised, we are at 54% of the goal and we think that we will be able to serve much more, many more than the 12,000 people we originally thought and we probably will get closer to 20,000. So that's about half goes to 60% of median income housing and the other half goes to 30% of median income housing with an emphasis on family housing, which has been missing in the region. Next. And then there's our supportive housing, which is just getting up and running. As you know, it was passed again in May by about 67% of the voters within the region. It's $250 million a year for 10 years to functionally end chronic homelessness in, in the entirety of the region. It goes to the three counties who have been working on their plans. So once the money starts flowing in July, because it's a brand new tax on high income earners as well as high business income earners, that money will be going directly to rental assistance and then wraparound services, including mental and physical health, addiction services, as well as workforce initiatives. So we're very excited about participating in that. But again, the money basically comes to Metro as a region. It flows out to the counties. We are providing the oversight. We do not implement affordable housing. We do not implement supportive housing services. We are just the oversight. Next. And then finally Parks in Nature, along with all of your support, we passed the Parks in Nature Bond Measure in November of 2019, $475 million to protect more open space than we already have, which is 17,000 acres. We're going to be looking at opening up to Haylen Ridge here soon, which is exciting. This, of course, is my backyard, Clackamas County. Sorry about that. It's looking towards Washington County though. So that's, that's good. It's a good perspective. But you know, we, we already have Cooper Mountain out there, Orinco Woods and Killen Wetlands. So, but embedded in the, the 475 million is the local pass-through to your parks program as well as the grants for your folks to be able to apply for grants, to be able to do extra things, including education and programming. So it's exciting. Next. That's it. That is entirety of what Metro has been up to in a nutshell. The transportation, if you want to talk about the transportation reboot, I am completely open to doing so, but I'll let, I'll let you dictate what you want to talk about.
That definitely was going to be my question. If you can just kind of give us a feel for what the strategy might be moving forward since we weren't successful in last November.
Yeah. So we've been doing a lot of conversations and my ears are open and they will continue to be open of what worked and what didn't work. What we have heard from a variety of stakeholders across the business spectrum, across the advocacy spectrum, across the elected spectrum is, you know what, we really like the way Metro put the package together. We like the openness of the process, the transparency of the process. We thought you listened to what we needed and we really like the contents of the package as a result, although we, we, whoever that is, we'd like a little tweak. Everybody wants just a tad of a tweak here and there. What we didn't like is how you were going to pay for it. That's basically what happened, right? In the, in the final throes, before we referred it, that's when some of the businesses going into COVID decided, you know, this is just something we can't take on right now. They didn't let us know beforehand. So that's too bad because we did try to negotiate a little bit and we would have given them a little bit more time, but they decided that that was that. We thought it was important enough that we had put it off for four decades and we knew that there would be the potential of a Biden administration with an infrastructure package as well as state transportation money that we, you know, we didn't want to jeopardize losing that money by not having a local match. And so it, it's important for us to keep going and listen to what folks have said. So what we're looking at doing is starting this spring, bringing back together the task force and starting to talk about what those tweaks might look like to the package, and then putting together a parallel new transportation finance committee that would spend 100% of its time thinking about and educating itself on everything, not just what Metro has authority, because that's what we did last time. We just said, what is within our authority? This time we'll put the state and federal money on the table and we'll put financing that we don't even have in the region yet on the table that people want to talk about. People want to talk about congestion pricing and how that could pay for some of the package. People want to talk about vehicle miles traveled and how, if there was a program that could pay for some of the package. A lot of people want to talk about cap and trade and how that could pay for some of the package. These are things Metro does not have the authority to do. They're not even a program yet, but we want to make sure that we are completely open about what, what could be on the table. There is also a, a lot of discussion at the federal level when it comes to the Washington County Top Priority Project of getting light rail down Barbara Boulevard, the Southwest Corridor. We were looking at a 40/60 split prior to a Biden administration. We can probably get much higher on the federal match than 40%. So that would bring down the cost of that project, right? So that would help. That would be a, a bigger match coming into the region. So that's the sort of thing we want to get on the table at this point, but there still needs to be a local match and we still don't have it and there's no state money dedicated to the Southwest Corridor. So even if there were money from the state, it would be small. It would be in partnership, but it would be small. And so it's, it's still a lift that we need to make and we all know that congestion is coming back already. In fact, I just heard on the radio just this week that we are back to pre-COVID levels of congestion. So we're there and not everybody's back to work, right? And so people have asked me, well, how, you know, how does COVID change things? I'm pretty sure that we're still going to have congestion because we're so oversubscribed to our roads as it was pre-COVID, even if there's a bump down because some people, even if 10%, let's just say 10% work from home, right? Coming back from COVID, you know, two or three days a week. A 10% reduction is not enough to make Highway 26 function during the peak period. There's still congestion, right? So we still need to figure out how to make these investments and make our system work for the long run. So I'm excited. I'm excited to start up these committees, get it going again and keep a conversation open with you because, like I said, there's, there's some tweaks that people want to make.
And I appreciate that. You know, I'm very selfish when it comes to this because my biggest concern, of course, would be Highway 99 and we can see how much the traffic has increased already, just like many other roadways. Has there been any conversation or do you think there will be any conversation about splitting out funding for the congested roadways as a separate ask between that and the light rail? Do you still think that there's an opportunity to combine them where there's no opportunity if we don't combine them?
You know, our polling never showed that light rail was actually an issue. There's always going to be those who are against light rail, but it was never an issue in passing the package. Those who were against paying for the employer payroll tax that this was based on tried to make it an issue during the campaign.
Well, I just want to make sure that whatever we do, there's got to be some planning dollars for Highway 99.
Yep.
It's gotta come.
Yep. That, that was in there. That was in there, Mayor, based on, based on.
The next one as well.
It will not go away. You know, I think what we've heard are things like from the freight folks who were, who had at the beginning said, we don't, we're not interested in a regional package because we're freight, we're more concerned at the state level. Suddenly, suddenly when their folks were being taxed, they suddenly at the very end wanted freight projects. And we said, well, the, the task force did its work. You weren't part of that. And so we didn't have a specific freight project. We had a bunch of projects that were good for freight and, you know, things like Columbia Corridor. That's a big freight corridor for the, for the entire region, both now with parcel delivery as well as port work, you know, railroad. I mean, there's just, it's a giant employment area and it's a multimodal mess up there with the residents and trying to get trucks in and out. And if, they said that if the city of Portland had put it in, they would have wanted the bike way that they want built, parallel to Columbia Corridor. That's what they would have put in the package because then there would have been safe bicycling facilities and the trucking would feel like there was an ability for all modes to be safe. So the truckers actually think very highly of the bike corridor idea. So I think that's the kind of thing that we need to get back on the tables. What, what did we miss? You know what? It was the first regional transportation package that we've created and again, it was a good start. Trying to find a way to finance it is always the hardest thing. The city of Austin, I was on a call with them and the mayor said to me, don't worry, Lynn, we passed it on our third attempt.
I know it's not easy.
I'm like, no, second. We're going to pass it on the second.
Okay. I'm all for it. Are there any other questions or concerns from council?
No, let me just flip it over to Counselor Rosenthal for any last thoughts.
Okay.
Well, I don't think I have a lot to add. I would have to say that, as you probably know, all of these subjects are a little bit more complicated than the short version that we heard today. One of the, the parks includes also trails, which of course the Tonkin Ice Age Trail is something that's going to at least touch into King City. So that's of interest. There's some other things going on. There's a memorial, which is part of the equity process for building a memorial to the Chinese laborers at one of the cemeteries, Lone Forest Cemetery in North Portland. There's a lot of other little things going on around the region that I'm sure you know, but once you get into the weeds, as I'm sure you know as a council, that you'll, you'll find all sorts of little things. The transportation alone is, has many different faces. So there's a lot, there's a lot to keep us busy.
Well, I appreciate your hard work.
Yeah. I, Mayor, I don't, I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to, to thank Lynn and Garrett for coming tonight and sharing with us and applaud you for all the hard work and I know you're going to continue and we look forward to partnering with you.
Absolutely. I agree.
Counselor.
Anyone else?
Well, have a good meeting and we much, much appreciate your time and thoughtfulness all day, every, every day, for every year. It's a lot.
Appreciate you guys and really taking the time to speak with us is very important to us, okay?
Yep. All right. Call anytime. Talk to you later.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Okay, next up, we have supportive housing services known as SHS, Local Implementation Plan. And we have Josh and Ty who are going to present. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Gibson.
It's great. I thought I saw Ty somewhere.
Ty, are you here?
He was. I did see him a little while ago.
Yeah. He, he, he might have to leave a little early today. I think I have a tight schedule, but I, I can, I can move us through the presentation, Mayor Gibson and Council.
So formally introduce yourself and your title so that we know exactly.
Absolutely. My name is Josh Kreitz. I'm the Assistant Director of the Housing Department of Washington County. It's great to be here with you this evening. I'm going to share my screen. I wanted the mayor and council to give you a heads up. I shortened the presentation just a little bit because I know of the time constraints, but you do have the full presentation in your pack and I would encourage you to see that, but I thought I'd get to the more salient points just because of time constraints.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and pull the presentation up right now and share that. And I will, just give me one second. Get us going. Okay. So just to kind of go over what my agenda is going to be this evening, I'm going to review the supportive housing services measure and program, review Washington County's local implementation plan and its readiness, and then provide time, obviously, for questions and feedback. As you may recall, the supportive housing services measure was approved last year by voters with 58% in May of 2020. It was really built and championed by a broad regional coalition of businesses and community leaders. And this measure is really what's interesting. It's skilled to end chronic homelessness regionally in partnership with Clackamas and Multloma County. We just had Metro Chair Peterson here talking about the measure. So we get to get a little bit more into the weeds here about it. So it's great that she was here to almost set it up for us here. What's interesting and what I'm really trying to hit on as we talk about this, because in my affordable housing and homeless career, I've never seen anything quite like this. This is the largest per capita investment to address homelessness in the nation. So there really isn't quite anything like this out there. The revenue sources are that the program is funded by a 1% tax on taxable income of more than $125,000 for individuals and $200,000 for couples filing jointly. The other part of the tax is a one. The other part of the tax is a one percent tax on profits from businesses with gross receipts of more than five million. It's estimated to generate more than two hundred million per year. I think you heard Councilor Peterson say two hundred and fifty million. So as it scales up, that's significant funding, a quarter of a billion dollars a year for the next ten years to address homelessness. In Washington County, we're anticipating receiving thirty eight million dollars in year one. And annual revenue is estimated to increase up to seventy five million by year three. So that is as I've been talking with councils, letting you know, that's more than ten times the amount of funding coming into the county for homeless services right now in year one. So that is very significant. So just so you, for your council to better understand the distribution methodology, it's really being distributed by how it's being collected. So it's not going based on the need. It's actually going back. If the taxes come for Washington County, the money comes back to Washington County. So this is the distribution, Multloma County forty five percent roughly, Washington County thirty three percent, Clackamas County twenty percent, twenty one percent. Metro will retain funds to cover tax collection costs and up to five percent for administrative costs as you as as you heard earlier, they are kind of the regulator looking over the program and distributing funds. Just to kind of talk about some of the accountability structures built into this program. There's local advisory bodies here in Washington County. We have a local implementation plan advisory committee. And that's made up of over forty different organizations, I think seventy different individuals on our local implementation plan. So it's a broad collection of nonprofits, culturally specific organizations, municipalities, staff from cities, planners. So it's really been a great group to give us broad feedback about how to scope up the plan. There's also a regional oversight committee at the metro level, and then we also have a tri-county advisory structure in place. Just to talk a little bit about who's, who are we prioritizing with the communities that need here as we scale this program up and we talk about who we're going to be housing? So it's really meant to address and assist people with disabilities experiencing or at risk of prolonged homelessness with extremely low incomes. We're calling this Priority Population A. And just so you know, seventy five percent of the funds are targeted to priority population. These are the chronically homeless individuals that we're seeing are really in places that are not met for human habitation. We're seeing them in encampments. They're sleeping in places they shouldn't be, shelters, things of that nature. The next population, people experiencing episodic homelessness or they're at risk of homelessness, that's Priority Population B. So it's folks who could really just fall into homelessness with a missed rent payment or you know, just just those little things that those hiccups in our day to day life that could really, in this environment, put somebody in a in a state of homelessness. So twenty five percent of the funds are set up in the measure for that population. And this measure is really designed to lead with race. As we understand, Black Indigenous and people of color, BIPOC communities are disproportionately impacted by homelessness, and that plays out in the numbers. We see that in the homeless numbers throughout the region. And I think Oregon Housing and Community Services, OHCS, does a really good job of, there's a lot of data out there statewide that shows this to be the case. So what are the services provided? What are we going to actually do with this funding as we receive input and feedback from our community? Housing services obviously is one of the big things that we're going to be doing. Long-term rent assistance and other emergency or short-term housing interventions. I'm gonna get into specifics, which I think you'll find interesting in just a minute here. But when I say long-term rent assistance, think about like the Housing Choice Voucher or Section Eight Program. It's a long-term rental assistance will be something similar, only much more flexible and regionally developed. So we're excited about that. There's two sides of the coin. You need the housing, but you also need the support services. So we're excited that we're going to be able to provide intensive housing case management, mental health care, addiction and recovery services, employment supports, peer supports, and more is needed. Again, a lot of these individuals and families, they've had a lot of trauma in their lives and a lot of acuity in different situations that popped up to lead to their houselessness. And so we're excited that we're going to finally be able to scale up the services to the level needed to address this, help help these individuals who are out there, get the outreach, get the navigation, help them find units. And then once they find units, also provide those services ongoing to help them stay in the units, keep them connected to the different services that'll help them be successful in their recovery and in their path. The local implementation plan, the LIP, is developed in partnership with stakeholders and communities. And it's approved by the Board of County Commissioners and Metro Council. And I think what's really interesting is this is the framework. The LIP is giving us a framework based on community input, based on input that we're receiving over the course of the next several months to give us that framework about how is this plan going to be implemented and how it's going to be structured. And there's ten required elements within the LIP. And just to give you kind of a high level overview of that, the analysis of our current system and unmet needs, analysis of racial disparities and strategies to advance equity, regional commitments to priorities, coordination and outcome metrics, and planned program investments and outcome goals. As we've worked on this with our local implementation plan committee, six categories of investments have come up that have really come to the top. Shelter and transitional housing, outreach and navigation services, again, really getting out to the encampments and where folks are at, housing barrier costs and short-term assistance, regional long-term rent assistance, supportive services, and then also we understand we're building up a massive system of care. And so how do we invest into this system of care to ensure that it's resourced properly for implementation? I I'm really excited to kind of present this slide right here. We understand the the scale of the need. And I think what we're trying to demonstrate in year one is we're putting some pretty big mile markers out there as far as program goals. We think these are extremely aggressive, but we also think they're really achievable. So our year one outcome goals are to create five hundred supported housing placements. That means house five hundred chronically homeless individuals in year one with all the services that are necessary to get them housed and keep them housed. Next goal, five hundred additional households achieve housing stability. We talked about those individuals and families who experience episodic homelessness. They missed their rent, something happens, a family member passes away, and all of a sudden they're in this limbo period, which you know, maybe two, three months of of somebody paying their rent would help them. Or if somebody just paid the security deposit, they'd be able to get in and maintain their rent. So additionally helping five hundred households. One thing that we're missing in Washington County is we don't have any year-round shelter beds. We do have temporary winter shelter beds, but we don't have year-round shelter. So our goal in year one is to create one hundred year-round shelter beds to add to that capacity and continue to fund a hundred and fifty winter shelter beds as needed. We also want to ensure that we invest successfully into capacity building for culturally specific organizations. We understand it's to take a lot of services and community-based organizations and that we need to invest into our culturally specific organizations and help them build capacity and then build up measurable goals that demonstrate equitable outcomes. One thing that I want to hit on here, especially as I speak with your council, is that geographic equity is a one of the components here as we implement this measure. So we understand that different cities and different jurisdictions within the service area, they're going to need, you know, different types of investments and services and housing and and shelters. So again, we make that commitment to geographic equity as we build out this system of care. Awesome. Next steps. So the LIP, the local implementation is out for public comment right now, March tenth through the twenty fourth. The LIP approval is will be with the Board of County Commissioners on April sixth. One of the questions we get quite bit is like, how are you going to build this system of care out? How can you get this money out here? It's a massive undertaking. We'll be releasing public solicitations in the upcoming weeks and months, RFQs, to build out this system of care, providers, shelters. So that will be coming up very soon. We'll be working with Metro on our LIP approval and intergovernmental agreement. And then obviously, we want systems and culturally specific capacity building is a major part of what we're doing. And if you're asking, when's this all going to happen? When do we actually start seeing this take place and get people housed? July first. That's a goal. So we are building fast. We are working. This team is, our internal team is building capacity and working towards the July first implementation, so that in the year one, we can meet the goals, those lofty goals, but again, achievable goals that we outlined at the beginning of this. Obviously, I I want to take any questions and comments and feedback that your council has. But I I would like to pose a couple of questions to your council, if that's okay. And those are, how would your city like to support or participate in the supportive housing services programs? And then what housing and and obviously, we can must stop sharing here. What housing programs are are your cities working on right now that where we could collaborate and work with you and be a partner in this work and see where there's alignment? I will, I will stop now, but thank you so much for your attention.
That's a wonderful presentation, and everybody knows how important it is to try to resolve the housing homelessness situation that's in the entire region. King City is a little bit different because you don't see so much of it on the streets. You know, you don't see the camps. And I'm not saying it's not there because I've had some reports that we do have some camps that have popped up from time to time. But it's always been my biggest concern about those people who are living paycheck to paycheck and are one emergency away from being homeless. And you know, the dollars, and I know it's here. I know it's in King City. And I just want to make sure that it's clear to the people, the residents of King City, where to get that help and when will that help be available? We know what COVID has done. We know that people are already behind. There's been relief. There's been a moratorium and all of that. But you know, I'm really afraid of what's going to happen when all of that dries up and the end of moratoriums and the end of relief is there. So I'm hoping, and if I understand the program, that this will kick in to help some of those people that are just going to be severely impacted in that way to keep them housed. Is is that a true statement?
Yeah, that's a, that's a perfect way of putting it. I think, you know, we we know there's emergency rent assistance right now. There's a landlord compensation program, but you're right. Those funds will run out eventually. This program and the SHS measure in general is skilled to help us, again, address homelessness before it happens. We want to get to the folks who are currently chronically homeless, but let's stop it before it happens. Let's divert it before it happens. Because once people fall into that cycle, it it becomes one of those things that become much more expensive and a lot harder to treat and and figure out. Thank you.
And and just one question. There was a term that was in, I think it was just before the goals. It said, housing barrier cause I'm not familiar with that term. What was housing barrier?
Yeah, what we find is our individuals and families who have been chronically homeless, they may have been evicted a couple of times. They might have past landlord debts. They might have had utilities turned off in the past. And so this program, it'll allow us, let's say we find a unit for somebody and the landlord says, hey, you know, you you're evicted, you owe a thousand dollars to this landlord and you need to give us fifteen hundred dollars for a security deposit, we'll be able to do that. We'll just be able to do it. It's whatever it takes will be the approach with this program, which is amazing and refreshing if you've dealt with HUD as for as long as I have.
So that's barriers that will prevent somebody from becoming housed.
Yep.
Okay, I got you. Anyone else? Questions, concerns?
I I had a couple of questions. I think also as a former member to the kind of regional task force on homelessness that we had, which I thought was a phenomenal group because it brought together stakeholders and you know, members across the region that really had had a voice and needed to be heard at that table. And unfortunately, it disbanded when Tiger's bond was not was voted down. So it would, I'd really love to see some, you know, some type of task force that I think collectively, right? I think Mayor Ken said it correct that we, right, we think a lot of times in King City that it's kind of another area. One, we're really small, but obviously homelessness doesn't stop at a city's border. And the other reality is that as Portland starts to get a grasp on what they're going to do, right, it's just going to push. Right? I mean, certainly if I if I was homeless, I would move to King City to be homeless here because it's safer and it's not, you know, this, I mean, the suburbs are an attractive area. So I think it's right. Anyway, I digress. I am curious on what what is the plan as far as the the accountability to the commendable but lofty goals of year one? And how will we know where you are in achieving or attaining those goals or how close you are? You know, what's that outreach like?
Thank you, Counselor. That's a really good question. So, you know, we're building out a team of data analysts, and there will be yearly reporting to Metro. But we plan on building out a system that's to be accountable and that we can demonstrate that to our community where they'll be able to look and see where we're at in our goals. And if we're not meeting those goals, we're going to come back and say why and and make those types of changes. So that's a great question. That's a great question. And we'll be sure to make this as transparent and accountable as possible, so everyone in our community knows where we're at. And if we're making, meeting the mark, everyone say, great, keep going. Because the goal is we want to actually house around seventeen hundred chronically homeless people in Washington County. So that's just year one. So we we have a long ways to go, and I would be happy and our team would be happy to come back to your council at regular intervals to give updates on that.
I'd love that, yeah. Last, I I'm just another kind of question. What I mean, certainly like the rent support and all of that, and I like to hear the landlords that I think we all can acknowledge that there's likely a foreclosure boom that's going to come post COVID. So what what is the strategy you're thinking? Or is that kind of? I know there's lots of different stakeholders around the state dealing with that issue as well, but is that kind of a part of this or, you know?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So so this measure is really focused on the houseless population, not on homeowners. But I think, you know, with the Rescue Act that's coming out through Congress right now, I think there is funding in it for homeowners. Because you're right. I mean, it's not just renters, homeowners. Across the housing spectrum, a lot of families are suffering right now. And I think OHCS has been really progressive in the way that they're looking at the the housing spectrum as well. So I do think that there's some relief coming from homeowners, but this specific measure, the supportive housing services measure is really aimed at chronically homeless individuals and families and those at risk.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Thank you so much for presenting this information to us. I am wondering, first of all, where I can find more information about the people and the organizations and the different stakeholders that are already involved? If there's a list somewhere. And I'm also wondering, what you're doing is a lot, a lot of moving parts, so many steps, so many things that kind of need to work together. And I know that in our region, we have organizations who are doing a lot of those different parts well. So what kind of collaboration do you have with like community partners for affordable housing? Or Project Homeless Connect or or those sorts of organizations?
Yeah, that's a great question. So when when I get off the line today, what I'm going to do is send some links over to your council for you to explore. Now I have the local implementation plan, which includes the committee members. And I'll also allow you, the the local implementation plan is large. I would recommend you look at the first thirty pages because it has the meat of it. There's a lot of appendices. So if you want to dive deep and you have a free weekend, dive deep. But to your question about engagement with our community partners, we work with CPO quite a bit. We work with Project Homeless Connect. And what we're going to do is we're going to release a RFQ. In fact, we're going to have some engagement meetings. We're working with the Coalition for Communities of Color who's facilitating our meetings over the course of the next week or two. And we're going to be bringing them around the table saying, here's And we're going to be bringing them around the table saying, here's what we're thinking. What do you think? What, wh- where are we missing the mark? And we're going to release a really large R F Q. And we're going to bring all those partners to the table. And, and I think for the first time. In, in the history of homeless funding, we're going to actually be funding them with, uh, what we believe will be adequate funding to do this work. Again, if you think about HUD gives us around four million dollars a year to do homeless work in Washington County. Add another forty million to that next year. And then it's going to go up to seventy-five million by year three. So we're talking major scale. We're going to get the providers into our, uh, network and build this system of care. And, and we're going to take a big, big, big bite out of, uh, houselessness, uh, in our county and our region.
Nice. Um, kind of hard to even fathom. Um, it's very, very awesome. Uh, I had one more question. You were going through kind of the, like the triage system. These are the people that we want to, um, reach out to first. Is there any, um, delineation between whether there are individuals who need housing or families or? Anything, um, age, race? Can you go through that? Just one more.
Well, I'll say, a- all of this work, we're really focusing on equity and ensuring, uh, that we're serving communities of color equitably. And that's just because the housing system and the homeless system, like it's always had baked into it a lot of, of issues around equity. And so that's like the baseline for everything that we're doing. Are we getting into specifics of, are we serving domestic violence victims or veterans? Or we're not getting into population. Versus so much acuity and chronicity, right? Like, we're going to be looking at who have been the, the most chronically homeless individuals and families. And kind of get, get, get at, get at them in that type of way. Uh, the one thing that I can say, which is the first time I've ever said this, I, I've worked in Seattle. I've worked in Phoenix. I've worked in Germany. I've never been able to say this. We, this measure is scaled to end chronic homelessness and get us to functional zero in Washington County. That doesn't mean homelessness will disappear. But what it means is that there'll be enough resources and enough housing that in Washington County. That will be able to address that, you know, especially for the chronically homeless population. We'll have the resource. We'll, you know, we'll never end. There's so many up systems things that this doesn't address. Um, but this really is a, a massive, massive implementation. Yeah, I've, I've never seen anything quite like it. Um, so it's. Exciting. I, I came to Oregon at the right time, two years ago.
I'd like to share one more thing just with counsel quickly. Um, when we talk about it, how sometimes we can't see. Homelessness. Um, when I was teaching, I had a lot of families who attended schools, um, in Tiger Tuallerton who were living in. Hotels and Forest Grove and they had to, you know, take a cab and, and come in and. Um, a lot of their classmates might not have known and their parents of classmates might not have known. So. Um, we do have a lot of impact in our, in our community and often we just, we just don't see it. So, thank you.
Right. And, and just one more thing. If we've learned anything from. Dealing with all the crises that's been thrown at us, one after another, after another. And it seems to me it's going to be vitally important to. Be able to demonstrate how critical it is for people to know what steps to take to get help. You know, uh, to somehow make sure that whatever we do. It is not so complicated that people just can't get an answer. We've seen it with, uh, getting a COVID test. We've seen it with, uh, the vaccines. We've seen it with the people who have, uh, been dealing with, uh, the fires and trying to get help and trying to get, uh, the support that they need. And for this program, I would hope that it is a, a top priority to make. It easy for people to get the information and the help that they need. In order to take advantage of these opportunities. So please, uh, whatever you guys do. And we need to know it. We need to know so that we can put that information and make it available on our websites and on. Uh, Jamie and her, uh, team have a lot of, uh, input to the community with the, uh, Community Foundation. And, uh, so we just need to make sure that whatever comes out of this, that is easy for people to get. Uh, the information that they may need to get help.
When I wanted to just piggyback on that real quick, Mayor, because one of the things that I, I was absolutely shocked by when I joined the task force. Was just how difficult just our, if you just look at the, um, the severe weather sheltering. Right? Like in our minds, we're like, oh, there's a shelter. People can just go to the shelter. And people don't understand the distance that every day someone has to travel just within our own. County, right? So on day one, someone has to figure out by a deadline when they have no money and no resources to travel. Down to Wiltonville. And then the next day they have to go all the way out to Hillsborough and like, it's just crazy. And so one of the things that I always thought would be a phenomenal idea for city counselors is to spend a day. Traveling the route, right? That they would have to do or, you know, doing a like, not a day in the life of, I think that's, um. Pedantic, but you know, doing something where people who are making decisions and supporting funding and need to understand. The impact of some of these programs really understand what the barriers are. And so I would welcome a day where. I could tour or, you know, I went to the family, um, justice center, right? And just understanding all the various things that have to go into that. Like I think, I think that would be really helpful for people who just. Like, uh, Kate touched upon, like I talked to Ken and said that, you know, out of sight, out of mind. Like you just don't really understand if. You're not involved in that. So anyway, we applaud what you're doing and thank you for coming and sharing and talking with us. And we are here to support. Uh, ending homelessness in Washington County. Here, here.
And I'm hearing the message loud and clear, simplicity.
Yes, yes. If anybody else have, uh, comment? Micah?
I just, I just wanted to add to this with, uh, having just finished up the latest round of C B D E G, C B D G. Uh, funding requests. How exciting this is to hear. I, I mean, it's just, uh, seeing how, how much the need is really out there and how much. Uh, you know, the limitations are with the HUD funds that, that are available at this point. This is just incredibly exciting and, uh. I just, I, I'm really happy to, to see it and, and really, really happy to see the work that you guys are going to do.
Okay. Thank you, Micah. Anybody else?
Yeah, this is smart. I, I, I'll, I also agree. I think this is a great program, um, very supportive of the, of the, um, efforts here. Um, the human life, uh, as we all know, uh, key things, uh, shelter, health, security. I mean, all the things are very, very important and you gotta start from somewhere, right? So I think this is a very good, uh, step to, like Jamie said. Uh, when people have a place that they call home, it really gives them the, the place to always like come back to. And be able to go from there to attend to other things, um, be it dedication, be it, um, uh, any other thing else that they need to do. But they need to have a shelter, a roof over their, 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 their head first. I think it's a very good program. So thank you for sharing with us today.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Joshua, thank you very much. And, uh, tell Ty, uh, we're sorry that he had to leave. I know we. Uh, kinda, I got another presentation in front of them, but, uh, I look forward to you guys coming back in the future with updates and, uh. We applaud you for the work that you guys are doing.
Thank you so much. And I'll make sure you get those, uh, your council gets those links, uh, as soon as I get off the phone here.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council. Bye.
Okay. Okay, uh, let's move on. Uh, we'll go to open forum now. We welcome public comment at this time. The council will be happy to receive. Your comment pertaining to items on the agenda, including questions, suggestions, complaints and items for future agendas. Each person's time will be limited to three minutes. Now I do know for sure that we do have, uh, one person for sure that signed up for, uh, three minutes and that's, uh, Dr. Marvin Lynn. Who is a candidate for the Tiger Tuallerton School District Board. And we would like for, uh, Dr. Lynn to come on and formally introduce himself and. Tell us a little bit about this. Well, hello there.
Hi, thank you so much, Mayor Gibson, for having me. Thank you also to, uh, members of the council. Uh, Kate Moore, Councilwoman, thank you so much. Um, I'm running for position five on the Tiger Paulson School Board. And that's the position previously or currently occupied by, um, Maureen Wolf, who is, uh, elected not to run again this time. So. But, uh, a little bit about me, I'm a resident of Bull, uh, Bull Mountain area in Tigard and I've been here since twenty seventeen. Uh, my wife, Adjoa, is a nurse at Providence. I have three great boys, um. One of whom is a Tuallerton grad, running track, um, is on academic scholarship at U of O and. Uh, and another boy who is a sophomore at Tuallerton, he's, he's, he's so involved at academia. I'm not telling you all the things that he's doing, but. Blessed, um, with him. Um, I told, uh, Mayor Gibson, I'd like for him to meet him because he's interested in leadership. He's very engaged. Um, and, uh, our third child who's at St. Anthony's, that small classroom, mom's Catholic, you know, what can you say? So. Um, I'm a thirty-year educator. I've started a, a teaching elementary school in the early nineties. And, uh, graduated to being a professor and, and a dean at Portland State University and the College of Education. Uh, was prior to that, I was a dean at, at Indiana University, the University of Wisconsin. Um, I'm stepping back from the dean role this year so that I can participate and be more involved at the local level. So. Um, just excited about the opportunity to, to engage. Real quick, three important issues for me. Uh, racial equity, um, is one. Um, elevating student voice is another. And then strengthening the academic core, um, um, is, is another issue. I could go into detail about each of those, but you said three minutes. So. Thank you for the time, Mayor Gibson.
Well, this is a real pleasure. Uh, I'm excited about this opportunity. Uh, you know, this is, uh, what we need, you know, we need this kind of focus and the focus that you're talking about is absolutely necessary. And as I told you in our earlier conversation, uh, the mayors and the council. We want to support what the school district is doing. It's very important to all of us, you know. Uh, some of our councils have children within this school's, uh, system and it's very important to them. It's very important to me because I think it's our responsibility, uh, to do every, everything we can to have children properly represented and properly educated. And we need people like you. So I wish you the absolute best and, uh, I think it's going to work out.
Thank you so much.
Any questions? Uh, you can ask, uh, uh, Dr. Lynn a question if you'd like.
Uh, Dr. Lynn, this is, uh, Jamie Fender, uh, Tuallerton grad, U of O grad. So, um, here, here. Um, really appreciate you, um, coming tonight. I think, um. The school board is one of the most important, uh, elected positions that someone could, uh, really run for. The impact is so phenomenal. So. Um, I, I'd like you to maybe just touch a little bit more. I think this council, um, we really, um, applauded and supported our students. Um, in their, um, efforts and statement, um, following George Floyd and kind of the work that they did on, um, kind of diversity and inclusion and kind of standing up for that. So. Uh, I won't speak for the rest of the council, but certainly for myself, um, kind of the. Racial equity is very, um, is a, I think not only really. Imperative for this region, but also just, uh, something me personally that I really care about. So, um, can you just talk a little bit about? Um, maybe where, you know, how, what you see that the, the school board can do a little bit further or how you can support kind of the. The broadening, I should say, or supportive of, uh, bringing more of an equity lens to, to the school board?
Yeah, thanks, thanks for that question. Um, uh, well, I, you know, I think the school board, the, the school district has done a pretty good job already of identifying, you know, the equity pillars and. And, and, and I think targeting specific areas in which they might focus. I think what I would want to do is sharpen that lens a little bit. And think about, you know, some best practices, uh, as it relates to those out, goals and outcomes. Cause a lot of times, you know, we have. Uh, equity as a goal and we don't necessarily define it that well, right? Um, and we certainly, um, don't always have a set of practices and policies that we can align to those goals and then sort of study and measure. The impact and the success of those things over time. So I'm hoping to be able to, um, to think about some specific things we can do. Like, uh, thinking about how we deepen and enrich, you know, um. Uh, teaching for, for all populations and a more culturally responsive teaching, for example. Thinking about policies that, um, really, uh, um, enrich the experiences of all students. Because we know that, um, school policies can impact some students in a, in one way and other students in a whole different way, right? So we need to understand that, that there are these differential impacts of, of school policy, particularly on underserved kids, right? And, and think about a set of policies that, um, would be more, uh, amenable to the enrichment and, and the retention, quite frankly. Of kids who are historically underserved, uh, and then try to look at that over time. How has that impacted? Um, not only graduation rates, but suspension and expulsion, which we know leads to dropout and so on. So I think there are a number of things we can begin to do as a system. That help us to live out those goals in a much more direct way. And we can actually measure, you know, how it's going and then, um, um, look at the success of them through that.
Oh, I love it. Thank you. Could you drop in the chat, maybe your, um, either your, your, your campaign link or an email way to get, contact you and then how, um, you know. Then we can follow up with how we can support you. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. I put my email and I'll also put in, uh, the, a website address. Uh, it's a campaign website.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Glad to have you here tonight. Thanks for being here.
Great to be here. Kate, I thanked you upfront because you were one of the people who initially encouraged me to even do this. You know, I was very busy involved in administration and, and so on. And it's, you know, I think it would be a good thing. So thank you for your encouragement.
Smart.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, hi, Dr. Lynn. Uh, thank you. Again, uh, I, I also really appreciate what you do. Um. Sorry, Kate, I didn't mean to cut you off. Are you done? Are you still?
No, I just saw that your hand was raised, but the, the yellow hand blends into your background. So I'm not sure that anybody saw it.
Okay. Well, thank you. If, if, okay. Uh, I just wanted to say, uh, uh, thank you, Dr. Lynn, for coming to, um. To kind of, uh, to share with us your vision. And you've been through the, um. Going from the lower level of education all the way to the top and now coming back down, uh, realizing that, uh. Uh, the foundation is key and I appreciate you wanting to come back and do that. Um, so based on your experience now, what do you think with the COVID and what is? Isolation and, uh, homeschooling and everything that we have going on? How much of an impact would it be for the, the kids coming back to socializing again? How, how difficult is that going to be for them when we get back to being normal again?
Yeah, that's a great question. You know, I, 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 again, I'm a parent of three boys, one of them is who is in college now, but. Uh, and he, we actually went back to campus, uh, in, uh, January. So. We were worried about that and he, he managed to make that transition pretty safely. He's living in an apartment, just him and one other person, but. Um, you know, I, I do think that there are going to be challenges with, with folks coming back, uh, into a, a, a sort of. Big social arena when they've been pretty isolated all this time. I do think that, uh, teachers, administrators are going to have to think, think carefully about how we, um, uh, support the socially emotional needs. Um, of students, um, who may have, maybe suffering from some, uh, mental health challenges as a result of being so isolated. We know that, that kids that were in homes where, um, physical and other forms of abuse were prevalent, that that increased, right? Under COVID. And so I do think we're going to have to be especially attentive to, um, to meeting the needs of kids. Uh, in, in schools at all levels, um, and providing counseling and support for those who need it. Um, uh, and, and I think, you know, managing conflict, uh, right between kids and. And, uh, and making sure that there are professionals on hand who can support that effort as well. Uh, it's going to be a big deal. I think you're going to have a, a, a whole group of kids who are going to be behind academically. Um, you know, I, I, I know some young people, fortunately not in my household, but I have a friend who has a, a fairly well-off youngster who. Uh, was not able to complete three of their courses this past semester. Just, you know, took a no grade because they were. Dealing with some mental health stuff as a result, as a result of being isolated. So I can imagine what's happening with kids who don't have those resources at home. And. So they're going to be, uh, we're going to have to be patient with kids who, who may need to catch up. Um, I think in his case, he, um, didn't, didn't get an F in the class, you know, got a no grade and has the opportunity to complete the work. Um, at his own pace. And so we have to rethink some of the, the grading policies and practices, I think, that have been in place in the, in the past as well.
Thank you. Good luck.
Mayor, you're on mute. Mayor Ken, you're on mute. You're on mute.
Thank you.
Now we can hear you. I saw I saw you were talking.
Okay, as you can see, Dr. Lynn, there's a lot of passion for what's going on in our school system. And we are here to support. And you are part of this team. And you're welcome to come in and have conversations with us anytime. And that's during your campaign as well as after you become a successful board member, which I'm confident you will be. So you have so much to offer and we do appreciate it. Do we have any other comments from anyone else? I, yeah, Sean.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of piggyback on that conversation you were just having. Or or your the your thought process with children going back and having social emotional needs. And I I'm a TTSD parent. I have two kids in the in the system. And what one thing I've noticed is that there seems to be a real lack of counselors in the schools. I mean, like drastic, I think at Towalty, when my daughter was there, I think they had two, maybe three counselors for a thousand middle schoolers, too, Kate saying. I mean, that is, that doesn't make any sense. You know, it's during the most important time to address social and emotional needs, in my opinion, those those early teen years as well as the late ones. So my question to you, Dr. Lynn, is, do you agree? And if you do, do you have a plan to improve that if you were to be elected?
That's a good question, you know. I do agree. I I think that the social emotional needs of students, particularly in the middle school, are are neglected quite a bit. You know, I'm I've been I've been involved in the preparation and the training of school counselors at at PSU and other places. And I know that that the focus of their preparation is on those social emotional needs. But when they get into schools, they're primarily advisors, right? And they're putting people into classes and those kinds of things. And so we have to do something to shift that focus from kind of, you know, the the school counselor being just the one who worries about what class you're going to. Or like when I had to make sure that my 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 son's name was correct, it was the counselor who handled that sort of thing. To giving them the space and the opportunity to really be involved in some actual counseling work, which which they're very well trained to do. So I think part of it is a shifting of of priorities within schools. And it's not just our district. It's it's everywhere you go across the country. It's the same deal. Particularly in large schools. And 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 the social emotional piece is the first thing to get sort of cut off the table. Because, you know, you need that math instructor, you need that English instructor, right? And I think people sometimes think that you can do without them. And we are living the consequences of that, I think, when we see all these violent acts and so on occurring in schools. So I think we do have to emphasize that. But I but I think we need to also look for research and and evidence that shows what the positive impact of that is. And that's something I think I can bring to the table in terms of thinking about, you know, what does the data and the research tell us about why this is a useful thing to invest in? And that's something I plan to to do in this instance. Because I I do think that the research shows that it it can have a very positive impact when teachers, I mean, when counselors are actually able to participate in counseling.
I agree. Thank you so much.
Okay, this is absolutely wonderful conversation. Much appreciated, Dr. Lynn. I wish you the absolute best. I look forward to meeting your son. And we will have more conversations at some point in time. We've been talking about it. We want to try to establish a student counselor. We have been talking about that, not only for the city council, but we would like to get a student involved in the planning commission as well. I think those are some things that we really need to work on. We haven't been able to make it happen yet, but it is something that we are bound and determined to do.
I love that because I'll just say real quickly, that's what I did as a youngster, you know. I participated in student councils, I participated in citywide student councils. I was a rep to the faculty group when I was at DePaul in Chicago. And it's the reason I'm here today. So absolutely. And if I can help in any way, let me know.
All right, we're a team. We're going to work together.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, all right. Well, that was great. All right, let's move on. You're welcome to stay if you want. But we're going to move on to, we don't have any unfinished business. We need to move to new business. And believe it or not, we do have a seven point one liquor license application. We haven't had one in quite some time. And it's Vrizzo Enterprise LLC. Who's talking to this?
I can do it. Our mic can do it.
Go ahead, Ronnie. It's all yours.
All right, so let me pull up my screen here just so everybody can see it.
And the licenses in the package.
That is correct.
The license request, I should say.
I have a lot of things open in my window here.
Did you lose it, Ronnie?
I did. Like, of course. Now I can't find it. So there it is.
Well, yeah. Go ahead.
All right, can everybody see that?
Yeah.
All right, so we that go down. So here we have a an off premise liquor license. This gentleman is a delivery enterprise, I believe. And he delivers to local stores and so on. I will let him talk about that. I believe he is on. But does any counselors have any questions at this time before we move on?
Can you define what off premise means?
Off premise, yes. So if you're not familiar with on premise or off premise terminology for alcohol, off premise means that they are not selling alcohol out of their house, business, or anything related to selling or retail of alcohol. Off premise is it's kind of what it is. Does that make sense? Mike, can you clarify?
So essentially, William is planning on doing distribution. So he'll be handling alcohol, but not in his house. Well, he'll be doing offsite distribution, but he runs the business through his house. So he has to have the liquor license to do his business. He runs his business out of his house. It's a no customer business, but then he drives and distributes alcohol to other places.
Clarify, there's no retail component to the public. It's simply he's running his distribution out of his home where he may store alcohol, but no one can show up at his front door and knock on it and say.
Correct.
Give me a credit.
Correct, yes.
This does allow him to store supplies at home. Is that true?
Correct.
That's my understanding as well, yes.
Okay, all right, okay.
I I'm Will. I'm the one with the license. I, you know, if I may just describe a little bit here, it's a primarily just wine. I work at a winery in Sherwood. And I've had this license for two and a half years, was doing it previously in my previous residence. I'm a new resident in King City. And off prem, off prem is is depends on restaurants. I usually have an on premise because they're drinking on premise. Off premises were primarily you can distribute to retail spots like liquor stores. I don't have any liquor because it's not allowed by OLCC. So I just have wine as my primary product. And yes, it would just be to store in essentially my garage is where I turned it into just a storage. I don't have enough inventory right now to have a enormous amount. If the business does begin to grow, I can probably run out of a storage space. But for now, I think it's adequate for for my garage.
Okay.
Does any counselors have any questions or concerns?
So I just wondered, so do you live in on Maxfield Lane? Is that your address?
Yes, that is my address.
Oh, where is that? That's in King City?
Yeah, that's Arden Village.
Oh, okay.
It's subdivision north of Roseberry.
Oh, okay. I didn't recognize the name. Thanks.
But well, how long have you lived on Maxfield?
Let's see, it's going to be since late October of last year. So about four months, four, yeah, about four months.
Well, we we like what you're doing. We're glad. We're glad that you're being an entrepreneur. But I have to tell you that if you don't use King City, you gotta say that I live in King City.
Oh, believe me, believe me, on my social media, I am putting every post King City oriented, says it right up top. I totally am representing. I love this area. My wife and I are pretty new. And yeah, I just specialize in wine and hospitality and business management. That's my career.
So Will, the next question is, do you have designs at some point to open up like a phenomenal little wine bar? And, you know, that would service King City? Because I think every single person here would love that.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, I, part of my initiative is just to bring local wine to to the, you know, as much people as I can. I really respect the wine industry here and very different from where I come from to be living in this area where it's essentially your backyard or vineyard. There's some special stuff in these bottles. So it's pretty unique. A lot of selection that I'm really focusing on, I really do, you know, go to the wineries, talk to the wine makers and and get their their, you know, consultation of when I put it on a menu. And yeah, just, you know, again, this part of it is just essentially you need a facility to to put this in there. I'm just one man show. But absolutely, I would say in the future, I can get a brick and mortar and, you know, have a tasting room of of the best of Oregon, I guess, you know.
Can you, I didn't look at the application closely enough for your social media, but can you drop it in the chat for us so that we can kind of check you out and and help promote your business and so forth? So not that you're pro quo, but just, right?
Oh, absolutely. I am. I'm working with a designer right now who who I work with at Ponzi. I don't know if you've heard of Ponzi Vineyards. I'm an operations manager there and I just tangent off. Again, it's been even before I was working there, it was a project of mine. So I'm working with a really nice designer who's kind of putting it all together for me. So I will definitely drop that link once he's finished with that.
We we love to support all our King City businesses, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll play very pay very close attention to the growth plans of King City. You know that one of the plant, part of the master plan is to have a new town center out near Roy Rogers, which is pushing up against wine country out there. There may be a spot for you for a future wine bar, so.
Excellent.
And your voice needs to be heard. If you think that what we're doing is good, get involved.
Thank you so much. Yes, I will definitely do that.
Okay. All right, any questions before we, we're going to have to do a motion in a second on this? Okay, we need a motion.
I motion to approve the OLCC license for William Brasso, Brasso Enterprises LLC.
Second.
All in favor, say aye, raise a hand, or Mike, do you need a head count?
I have everybody.
You got everybody? Okay, cool. All right, Will, thank you so much. I wish you the absolute best.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Okay. Okay, seven point two proclamation, National Community Development Week, April fifth through April ninth. Who's talking to it?
You want me to read it out?
I would love it.
This is every year. It's to support the Community Development Block Grant Program. So I can read the proclamation. They do great work and we continue to support them. Okay, proclamation, National Community Development Week, April fifth through April ninth, two thousand twenty one. Whereas the week of April fifth to April ninth, two thousand twenty one has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnerships Program. And whereas the CDBG program provides annual funding and flexibility to local communicate communities to provide decent, safe, sanitary and suitable living environment and economic opportunities to low and moderate income people. And whereas the Home Investment Partnership Program provides funding to local communities to create decent, safe, affordable housing opportunities for low income persons. Nationally, over one million units of affordable housing have been completed using home funds. And whereas over the program's history, our community has received a total of one million thirty six thousand four hundred and twenty six dollars in CDBG funds. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of King City designates the week of April fifth through April ninth, two thousand twenty one as National Community Development Week in support of these two valuable programs that have made tremendous contributions to the viability of the housing stock infrastructure, public services and economic vitality of our community. Be it further resolved that this community urges Congress and the administration to recognize the outstanding work being done locally and nationally by the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnerships Program by supporting increased funding for both programs in fiscal year two thousand twenty two. In witness thereof, I here too set my hand and causes seal of the city of King City to be effect on this seventeenth day of March, two thousand twenty one, Mayor Gibson.
Yes.
That's you.
That's me.
You do so attest.
I I do so.
Then we'll have this ready for you to swing on by and sign.
I will do that. Okay, I think it's a wonderful thing. And Michael, you have anything to add?
I I just actually had a real quick question while looking at the the kind of project list that was in the packet as well. Is it, it looks like, have we in any of the recent years since two thousand seven even applied for any of the grants?
Yeah, we did. We tried to get some for Garden Villa, the sewer project down there. But they get lumped in with the Highlands and then that ups their economic revenue and they no longer qualify for the low income piece. So what we have to do in order to get those funds for that area is do an individual survey of the Garden Villa area to try to kind of pull them out of the TAS that they're mixed with right now.
Okay, so just having seen some of the infrastructure projects that have gone through over the last couple of years, I just was curious because I know that we've had a number of infrastructure projects that could be potential qualifiers, so.
Indeed, yeah. It was kind of frustrating because we thought, you know, here's a low income community right in the heart of the city that really needs some help. And so we inquired and tried to push it and we ran into a brick wall. So it's just going to take us some time to either separate that economic.
Kind of interested, kind of interested to see what the census did this year.
Yeah, that would be another one.
So that our last year in two thousand twenty, so that, kind of see what they did.
So do Mike, do we have to drive that change? I mean, to separate it out from the Highlands? Is that something that we have to do?
Yeah, essentially the city has to take it upon itself to do a survey, but we have to follow all the HUD rules and regulations. And it has to be HUD supported. And there was, when we looked into it, it was a lot more administrative work than what we had initially planned or had time for. And so it kind of fell to the wayside.
Okay. And and this is not something that any consultant can do for us. It has to be internal to our operation.
Oh, we could probably hire a consultant to do it. It's how much do we want to spend for it?
Right. I'm just thinking, I mean, because, Mike, it sounds like funding is in fact available. And they do have a real situation down there that could turn into a somewhat of a nightmare if there were. And what we're talking about is that sewer line that runs right under the houses, right, Mike? Mike?
Yeah, yeah, I thought you were talking to Mike.
Mike?
But yeah, we're talking about the private lines that run underneath the the houses. The problem was is that we also, when we tried to pitch it and try to get clean water services in to do part of the surveys, that we ran up against some of the community that didn't want it. So, you know, without community support, like Clean Water Services isn't going to do the initial scoping or look into the total evaluation of the project. So it's kind of just a dead stick right now because the way that the community reacted to us trying to help them out.
Well, I I know it is not a top. Well, I, I know it is not a top priority for us, I mean, we've got so many things, you guys have so many things going on right now. There's no way you can tackle this right now, I'm just hoping that nothing happens before uh, those folks, before this can get resolved, so uh, but uh, Mike, I think you're absolutely right, if they're funding through the CBGC, uh, then uh, at some point in the future, we need to be able to put ourselves in a position to take advantage of it too.
Mike, do we know, uh, has litigation started on?
Haven't heard, yeah.
I know it has nothing to do with us, but have we heard through the grapevine?
Uh, no, I, I haven't heard Andy or nor anyone mention it, uh, gosh, since, I wanna say it's been almost six months since it was last mentioned, uh, just in passing.
I randomly, I'm on a, a Multnomah um, County Bar Association Committee with their attorney, with the, with the homeowners who are filing suit attorneys, so I might just ask for, you know, a, a uh, an update and I'll, I'll let you know if I hear it and if anything, but.
That'd be good to know, Jenny.
Yeah, well, I mean, I just, you know, and, you know, so it, it would be.
There's a pretty, pretty interesting claim that they were shooting for. Um, you know, clean water services is kinda like, this is the way we've done business for, you know, fifty years and they don't see any sort of risk in that lea- in the legal analysis that the other folks are trying to pitch, but.
For, for Shawna, um, for Shawna and Kate, just cuz I, they might not know what we're talking about, um, so years, years prior, there's some language that the, there's a dispute that there's an easement in the language from about fifty years ago and um, whether the specific language of the, of this um, easement includes the road going just the road or the, all the locations from the road to the houses, I guess is the easiest way, right? And so the homeowners are trying to claim that, no, the language of the easement is that uh, clean water services had to, is responsible for the piping from the home to the main pipe and um, obviously that's very expensive cuz it all needs to be refit and retrofitted and fixed and, right? And so um, I think clean water services and the regular reading of it is that, you know, a lot of people would, would um, say that it is not inclusive, that the easement language is clear and is out of that. So there's gonna be a lawsuit over defining and kind of um, getting what's called a declaratory judgment to have the court say whether it, yes, it is within the language or without, right? It's kind of an easy way to think about it.
Yeah, it's, it's kinda funny, it's a sentence, right, and the sentence is in a paragraph, so it takes multiple lines. If you read the first line without going and following the sentence to the next line, where it says, "All easements and everything shall be," but what's funny is "shall be in the domain of the public," blah blah, and then it says, "in the public right of way." So if you leave out the words "in the public right of way", then it makes sense that all the easements would be public, but because it's mench, it's just, you just have to read the full sentence and not just the one verse that you wanna take and, and, and hang on to, and that's what uh, they did, is they took the first paraphrase of the sentence and then they, they're grasping onto that without actually reading the full sentence, which limits those easements to the right of way.
Right, and what, the wa- the reason that all this is being discussed, because those houses were built with this sewer line running underneath the houses, rather than running down the middle of the street, the which is the way it would be done today.
But there's a pri- there's a sewer easement running underneath every house.
Right.
And so they're trying to say that that's a public easement, but that's not a right of way, it's under their house, so.
And it's hoping that they were built that way because if it fails, it's a real mess. It's, it's a really big deal if it were to fail, so that's what this is really all about.
So I, I, I'm a Realtor and I was helping a client buy a house in that neighborhood and they found out about this sewer problem and were like, I don't want anything to do with this, so I really feel for the homeowners there.
Yep.
Cuz they have to disclose that there's this litigation of, you know, going on and that it could be a really expensive fix for each individual homeowner, very expensive.
Exactly.
I really.
And it, it was, it was very unfortunate because I think there was some very good intentioned kind of information, um, me- like in, in from, informative meetings that were organized by some of the residents. The problem was the messaging got distorted a little bit and so instead of calming everyone about, hey, what are your options, how do you look into this and then what can we collectively do? Because Mike's right, like, clean water services was like, hey, let's, let's, we'll figure it out, we'll scope it, we can figure out, you know, where, if there's any problems on the lines and yada yada. Um, but then panic kind of uh, just, just went rampant through the neighborhood because of this misinformation and, right, and so it was really unfortunate because what was supposed to be some good information meetings with clean water services um, really soured very quickly and then everyone panicked and then everyone became shut down and didn't wanna have any more conversations. And then, and then someone started, you know, started talking about litigation and then clean water services was like, not now, we don't wanna talk to you anymore, and so it just, it was a really sad um, kind of event that clearly we had nothing to do with, it had nothing to do with city council, it didn't have anything to do with any of us, but y- you could just see how it snowballed out of um.
And Washington County and clean water services were going to pay for that scoping, it was gonna cost them a dollar. You know, it was completely on their, in that they put it in their project list for that year and everything, they were gonna come out and do entire scoping of the entire network to see what it was gonna cost to act.
No problem, or there could be literally, we are sec- you know, we are just a hairline away from a disaster and clean water services was gonna do it, but uh, that's what, you know.
Yeah.
What happens?
Well, hopefully it'll get resolved, so uh, if we go back to the proclamation, did we do a, a, a motion and second to approve?
Uh, it's just a proclamation, I don't think we need that.
Yeah, no, you don't need to, it's just a, it's basically the mayor stating.
Yeah, the councils just say that we're supporting, you know, Community Development Blocker.
We are supporting this.
If there's anyone opposed, please let me know and I will be.
Okay, alright, with that being said, uh, that was the last item on the agenda, we can go now to uh, Chief Heplah to tell us what's going on in his world.
Alright, I'm clicking things off my list here, I only shortened this up quite a bit.
Okay.
One of the things that uh, just kind of has gathered a lot of steam here in the south cities is body cameras that, uh, for police departments and one of the things that I've been tracking and watching a lot is uh, the cities that haven't had body cameras have been us down in the south cities, so Tiger, Twolton, King City, Sherwood's kinda had a smattering of some. And so one of the things that's happened here is that uh, in these meetings is, is that the city of Tiger is going ahead and pulling the trigger on uh, doing a whole new system, they're doing in-car new tasers and the body cameras, um, which is a substantial amount of money. And one of the things that I can, I can do and one of the things that we need to look at and Mike and I have been talking about is body cameras for our, for our officers and one of the things that I looked at was, you know, if everybody else buys right now, we're the agency that won't have them in, in all of Washington County. And so for, one of the things that's, just for our, you know, safety of the officers, for, you know, the transparency of complaints and stuff like that, it's something that we need to think about and something that we would need to do probably sooner than later, uh, one of the things that I can do is I can actually get in on Tiger's order, which could reduce the costs of body cameras cuz right now, if I did it on my own and uh, it was my own contract and I had to just buy it separately away from them, a five-year deal, say with Axon for the body cameras, um, turns out to be about a thousand dollars a year per officer. And so it's a thirty thousand dollar, five-year contract, so it'd be about six thousand dollars a year that they would spread out. And I think I can substantially, I can reduce that by a few thousand, being able to get in with Tiger. Uh, I don't know the for sure number on that yet, but it's something that we need to talk about and if I can do it with Tiger, then I'm gonna have to do it quick. And to be able to get on that or it's wait until a new fiscal year, and so that's something that we've been bouncing around the office and I think it's just something that helps, you know, get us into where we need to be, especially with what they have called evidence dot com, which is stuff that um, the DAs have access to. Um, it's something that we're able to uh, do some really neat things and I could, I could probably get a presentation together to show you just how neat these little units are and, and what they're able to do. And so that's something that just wanted to put towards you guys that uh, we may be asking for something pretty soon, um, sooner than later. Yeah, but it's just something I think that we need to do.
Ernie, are there any grant opportunities for something like this?
Uh, you know, one of the things that I was gonna look at was, um, things that this does I don't know if reduce our exposure is a good word, um, the attorney might correct me on that, but is that to look at CIS to see if it's something that uh, where they look at it and go, hey, since, you know, maybe it helps reduce insurance, maybe they'll pay for it, I, I don't know, but I haven't ever heard of any, anything as far as grants go uh, because it's a monstrous bill, I mean, for somebody like, say the um, city the size of Tiger, if they get a five-year deal, deal with all of their stuff, it's a seven-digit contract.
My goodness.
And stuff, and so it's, it's really large. But, you know, it's something that I think that we, we have to look at seriously and it's something that we, we need to do quickly.
Ernie, what do we, what's the storage of the data? Cuz I know the units themselves are an issue, are an expense, but then does that, is that contract, is that also for the storage of the data or do, is that separate?
Yeah, that, that's everything, and so what that does is, that lets us download, every time you plug the, the unit back in, it automatically downloads everything that you did and that's stored in the cloud with Axon and then we have a license for it and then the DA's office gets a free license for it, um, so that they can pull that information. That also gets us new body cameras every thirty months, um, just because of just the technology that just keeps advancing because the, the video and the things that you're allowed to do on them are, are amazing and then it also gives us the uh, uh, redaction software, you know, where you blur somebody's face out that maybe he's an innocent person, you know, or juvenile, that sort of thing. And so it's, that's all encompassing, it's all in one, um, that's, that's everything right there and that's the most money it would be.
Right. Hopefully, that, that's cheaper than what I would have expected it to be, so.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, I think it's smart, I mean, it just, it's good. I, I mean, we, we're just, we just, I can't think collectively are moving to that framework everywhere, you know? I know when, when I volunteered at the D D's office, right, if there wasn't body cam footage, the jurors were like, why isn't there footage, right, and?
And it's something, I even talked to Mike about this today, is that, you know, we get a call, a lot of calls from defense attorneys looking for all the electronic data and I'm like, we don't have it and there's no in-car camera, no body cam. And so it's an easy question to answer, but it's something that we need to look into. Now, you know what, it does, it creates a lot more work cuz it's, I have to view, view stuff for hours. The DA in particular, um, they're looking at trying to add staff, which they're not gonna get, but um, it's hours upon hours of viewing stuff cuz all of a sudden you say, me, Brian and Courtney show up on a scene together and we're there for two hours, it's six hours of footage because each camera is capturing a different view. And so it's, it, it does create a lot more work, but it also just, it clears up a lot of stuff too.
Yeah, it does. Mike, uh, who's, somebody, uh, Kate?
Sorry, I was, uh, you mentioned um, dash cams, if, if we had body cams, does that make dash cams obsolete? I don't know enough about, or would they serve completely different purposes?
So, i- you know, it's, it's where the dash cam or the dash cams, so they do a couple of things. Um, dash cams are great for if you get to see a vehicle in motion, um, say like a DUI or something like that. Seeing a car go down the road, you see it, you know, weaving between lanes, that's super. Now, we weren't, where I used to use them out where I used to work and so then you would, you would capture the audio of me speaking to a driver in a window, but you get no visual uh, reference of me looking at the driver, seeing them fumble, do all this sort of stuff. But you can hear us and then the only time you'll see anything is if I removed a driver from a car. And so it, it kinda limits it, you know, to that point, whereas if I have the body camera, you know, it's, it's activated, you know, as soon as you press the button, it also has a buffer. Um, the buffer is anywhere from thirty seconds to two minutes of what it will capture, the previous two minutes on the camera, it's kinda, it's always running basically. And so as soon as I hit the button, um, you'll capture the previous, whatever I set the parameters to be. And so it's just something that it's, it's an interesting look and I think it's a little bit better. You know, yeah, obviously it doesn't give a, a panoramic type view that a car one does, but I think it's better as far as the interaction with the person and then being able to see what that person's doing during the interaction.
Yeah.
Ernie, did you say that, I'm, I'm sorry, Kate?
No, no, go ahead.
Did you say that Tiger is investing in both car cams and body?
They're doing three, so the, there's the cars, the um, body cameras and then the Taser seven also has a camera on it. And so they can, they can have all three, so it gets a view from a taser also. Um, which, you know, it's, it's a, it's a massive expense and stuff, but yeah, they're, they're doing all three.
How many? Go ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
How many uh, patrol cars do we have that are active now?
We have three.
Three, okay.
The one thing to be cognizant of with this stuff is, how much data are we having to store? How much data are we having to ship to the cloud and those sort of elements? So, you know, Tiger doing three different units is just, it's budget blowing for a small city like ourselves, you know, so, I mean, we have to be really cognizant about what we can afford and what we can actually process and, so.
Ernie, is it one per every officer or is, does, do they rotate between who's on duty?
It would be one camera per officer.
Okay, well, we're gonna have to take a look at it, we're gonna have to try to figure out the cost and the comparison, Ernie, uh, that you're talking about is joining in with uh, Tiger versus doing it uh, on our own. Uh, we're gonna have to look at this and see whether or not it's doable for us financially. I mean, I think we need to do it, I want you to know that I support uh, the body cam perspective and I think it's important to have the uh, the car cam uh, as well. Uh, so I don't see any real need for a laser, I mean, uh, uh, the uh, laser, is that what it's called?
Taser.
Taser, taser, that's what I'm talking about, I don't see a need for that, but I do think it would be important to start going down the path of the body cam and the car cam.
Yeah, the one thing I'll say is that um, and I'll hand it back to Ernie here in a second. If we uh, move forward on this, we might have to go quick to jump on to the order, so if that happens, then we'll need to come back to the commission for budget approval or I think we have to come back anyways for a final supplemental. But uh, you know, that's something that's not currently in the budget, but uh, if the opportunity arises, it might be something that we wanna jump on and I don't know if we would have enough time to come back to the council before doing that, so um, you know, bringing this up, bringing it to your attention is to say, hey, we might need to do this. Can we just get a nod of general consensus that if we have the opportunity, we need to go forward, you know?
I, I'd say yes, and, but I wanna hear from everybody on this.
I think that makes sense, I don't think we should squander an opportunity to uh, you know, miss a discount when we all know this is where it's headed, right?
Right, can we just do a show of hands of everybody who believes that uh, we should? Right. Can we just do a show of hands of everybody who believes that uh, we should allow uh, Mike and Ernie to move forward? We're trying to get the best deal.
Cool. I've got everybody, seven.
Okay, alright, sounds good.
The one thing that hopefully we don't lose sight of is the additional administrative load that's created by all these additional functions.
Yep. You're right.
Yeah, and, and that's something that I think that, you know, I, I always feel like, especially now, obviously we're gonna, the department's gonna be doubling in the next few, you know, few years and stuff here in the, in the real near future. I think it's a great time to get it started. And then we can roll into this program and we'll be aware of, okay, this is what we need. And here's the timeframe. And then you actually can take somebody and have their administrative duties be able to take care of these issues and stuff. Because it will be something that uh, like I said, it is a, it will be time consuming when we get to the column. We also have to be really cognizant of, we're not all that busy right now. You know, our, our, our case numbers are still very low. It's a low crime city and stuff. But you know, it, it will pick up.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Do you have anything else?
No, I, I, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
That's wonderful. And uh, thank you for bringing it up. And uh, I trust that we will uh, make a good decision on this. Uh, okay, Mike?
All right, well, it's been a busy week. Uh, for those of you that were in attendance on Monday night, we did our first uh, public house for the um, master plan. Uh, Tuesday, we had our technical advisory committee meeting with the TSP. Um, so both of those are ramping up and moving forward. A lot of questions, um, of course, surrounding Fisher Road and uh, how we're putting a highway through neighborhoods. So uh, I think, you know, we tried to explain, you know, uh, we're building a grid. It's gonna diffuse traffic, um, the all, what are the alternatives to, you know, having a road? Or having multiple roads connecting through the city. Yeah, but I think a lot of people are just fixated on that, you know, and uh, trying to get them unfixated on that one issue. And focused on others is, is definitely a challenge, but I think we're getting there. And I think we're starting to get some feedback. Uh, we had one gentleman who's been an opponent for a while, um, discussed the cost of the bridges and things of that nature. Um, a lot of that stuff will be evaluated by our consultant team. And a lot of that stuff will uh, make its way to the surface in near future, I imagine. Um, on what those alternatives are and what the preferred alternatives are and what those costs associated with the alternatives are going to be. I still think though, even with the numbers that Mr. Swanson was ta- uh, throwing out there, that it's still cheaper um, to put a bridge uh, at Fisher than it is to buy up, you know, two thousand uh, or two miles worth of houses from nine nine W to, you know, one hundred and fiftieth or so. To widen beef bench essentially. So um, you know, we have to think about also what's the best situation for the future residents of King City? And what that looks like. So if we isolate one little neighborhood from everybody else, then that neighborhood is never really a functioning part of the city. So how do we make sure that we build the city for the future residents who are gonna be here in twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years? All those things need to be considered through our alternative analysis and all those things are coming up. So in April, we have a public open house again for the transportation system plan. I imagine that's going to be a, a hot topic day. And then shortly after that, in May and June, I think you're gonna have presentations before the planning commission and city council on the uh, transportation system plan. Along that same timeline, you're probably going to have at least one more case uh, presentation of the master plan coming in to this next quarter between March and June. Both at the planning commission and city council. Uh, we also have House Bill two thousand and one and uh, two thousand and three uh, storming up and catching uh, the rest of them. That'll be due here in the next couple of months. So um, a lot of little things like that going on. I was going to ask Jamie uh, how her conversation went with Amy on the mosaic tile pieces. And if she's interested or, or what's going on there?
We're, um, we have not been able to connect yet, but I'm hoping to get you discussions tomorrow.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and move forward with the concrete, hopefully.
Yeah.
Um, this week or next week and try to get them pouring.
Yeah.
Um.
I will not, I will not stop until I get an answer, so.
We have to move on it, otherwise we're gonna lose it. And so I, I'd like to at least get the benches poured out there and then uh, get it set for the tile. Heck if, you know, even if we just get reimbursed for the concrete out there. And then uh, you know, we could later. But anyways, I'm, that's on the back of my mind. And although it's a minor thing, I'd still like to see it come to fruition. I think it'd be good for us. Yeah, in the larger scheme of things. But um, those are the main items. I know it's been busy, uh, daylight savings time and everything kicking out this week. Uh, the park is looking in great shape. Dave has got uh, one full side of fencing up, including uh, where the dugout will be on um, on one side and he's working on the other. Uh, let's see, we have some more dirt coming out for the pitcher, pitching circle and the home plate circle. Um, those two areas will get a little bit more dirt um, over the time. Uh, soccer's, Southside Soccer's using it, um, blast, uh, bait, blast, what is it? Yeah, blast softball and flash baseball are all using it um, pretty much five days a week.
Did the city, have the city gotten any um, call complaints about how full the um, parking lot has been?
No.
Oh.
No, I haven't uh, received any complaints.
I was sure, we were down there. I was like, I was for sure that the, like, the, just the calls were gonna come in, so.
When was this? Yesterday or?
No, no, this is a couple of days ago, but it was, you know, it's cause the soccer was going on and it was great. And the parking lot was full and there's pickup and there's like, you know, there was traffic. But it wasn't unmanageable. It was totally fine and uh, but I just assumed.
Yeah, it's getting, getting.
This is what we were hoping for. We were hoping for an increased use of the park.
Right, it's upon us.
It's, it's happening and it's a wonderful thing. It's getting the use and it's getting well used. And I think that's really important. Uh, Mike, did you want to talk a little bit about uh, the uh, gas tax uh, that meeting?
Yeah, I did. I had that on my nose here. Yes, uh, so we had a conversation this week with uh, Peter Watts, city attorney on uh, revisiting the gas tax and potentially raising that to be an issue for the uh, November election. And so uh, Peter took a stab at rewriting the ballot measure that um, we had Jordan Ramis and myself kind of craft. And he was primarily Jordan Ramis and I gotta add a little bit here and there. But uh, Peter's kind of taking that and um, dumbed it down a little bit. Uh, I think we were at a uh, what, what do you, what do you call mayor, an upper graduate level like?
Yes, the way it was written the first time.
Under it level reading, so uh.
According to Peter, it was at a too high educational level for people to really understand what it was really all about. Peter is a firm believer that if you really want something like this to be understood, it needs to be written at about a fifth or sixth grade level. Not, and, and we're not saying that in a mean way. It's just saying it has to be very specific without a whole lot of question marks. When you read something like that, what is it supposed to do? What is the benefit of doing this? And what is it gonna cost me? Those are the kinds of things that have to be very clear and simplified in a ballot according to Peter Watts. Okay, and I happen to agree with that. Cause uh, he sent out an email that showed uh, the writing of the first one. And he took a stab at a second writing, simplifying it. And, but we also believe that it's very important to do a much better job than we did before on the community outreach. So that people really understand that majority of this bill is gonna be footed by people who do not live in King City. Uh, we understand that the traffic up and down ninety-nine, people stopping in at Arco and uh, Space Age are really going to help uh, foot the bill for keeping our streets well maintained. And uh, you know, in good repair. Uh, he also said that has to be very clear, where are the dollars going to be going? You know, what can I expect to see from this money? That's gonna be raised by a three cents a gallon or five cents a gallon uh, gas tax. We also talked about uh, the issue that uh, the gas station owners might have with doing this. Cause if you guys remember, uh, the, uh, at least the owner of Space Age posted signs on his gas pump saying, boat, no. So we need to deal with that and uh, try to better understand why they're in opposition and what it would be the impact to them for three or five cents gallon gas tax. We know that just recently in the last election, North Plains passed a three cents a gallon gas tax. And you know, they were successful. They also kind of tied it into their transportation system plan. That said, these are the kinds of things that we're looking to improve in your community and this is gonna help fund it. That's kind of the way they spelled it out. So what's gonna happen is that we have a meeting tomorrow. Uh, we've, I've asked uh, Kate and Micah uh, to join us on that team. And so uh, we're gonna try to uh, get this thing going. I wanna try to take as much of the burden off of Mike and Ronnie uh, to try to figure this out. So uh, as a council, we're gonna participate in this along with Peter Watts and try to do uh, most of the heavy lifting, okay?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jamie.
Well, I was just gonna say, um, I, I have a a, a connection to the owners of the Space Age. And I, you know, I, I just think getting them to the table and having a discussion is really probably imperative. So um, maybe um, Kate, why don't you give me a call offline and we can figure out how to facilitate that?
Okay, alright, that's, that's gonna be a great benefit. Uh, because I really do think it, it, you know, when you're a small city and you're always looking for ways to raise uh, uh, revenue, resources, this is a great way of doing it. Uh, and it's no real impact. When you look at uh, original King City, the Highlands and also uh, the uh, KCCA. And you look at the driving habits of the people who live there, how often do you really gas up? You gas up twice a month or once a month or every other month? Uh, if I'm driving my golf cart, most of the time when I have to go somewhere. Uh, people in non-age restricted areas drive a lot more. And, but how much of an impact will that be? Those numbers need to be clear of what uh, will it cost me if I gas up at the Space Age or Arco? How much is my, uh, how much more am I gonna have to pay a year with a three cents a gallon gas tax?
Well, and it would, it would seem to me that if we could get Space Age and Arco to understand that they're that, that they have the same amount. Cause right now, right, one goes up a tiny bit, then the other one goes up, right? And so I think it's important that it would affect them equally, right? And uh, what we surely don't want is to have uh, the narrative be hijacked with some type of, you know, look, this is how they're gonna fund Fisher Road. You know, we're right there. This is how they're going to put in whatever, you know? So I think we, uh, I think we just really need to get the messaging and the, and the written uh, the writing down, right? So.
That's a good point.
And I think. I, I, if you don't mind, just uh, once, one unknown that we don't know exactly is how much gas they're pumping every year. You know, I've heard range from three million gallons to twenty-five million. So that's a huge difference. That's like a hundred thousand to like almost a million dollars, you know? So knowing what those numbers are would be critical to our messaging on what we could actually accomplish with the revenues generated by it. Like if it is twenty million gallons that they're pumping and then our take at a three or five cent gas tax is seven hundred to a million dollars. That's a lot of roads fixed in a year, you know? That's like, five, ten years, we're almost done, you know?
That's big. And you build a fund so that you can continue to maintain over the years. I mean, it's a wonderful thing if people will just understand that there's more benefit than uh, the downside nowhere close uh, outweighs the upside. So I think we can do it. I'm, I'm excited. I'm confident.
Can we, can we go back real quick to the open house?
Yeah.
I, I put, I put this in the comments at the open house. Um, and I know I talked to Mike about this, but I was very frustrated with how difficult it was to find the link to get onto the meeting.
That was you who put that in there?
Uh, that was me who put that in there. Apparently it came through anonymous, which I didn't mean it to. But uh, it, if it was, if it was frustrating for me, I can tell you that our, our strong opposition group, right? So um, I think it really defeats our uh, our kind of messaging that we want to be transparent and inclusive and all of that. So I would, I really will hope that they're going to put it on the landing page, right? Uh, I candidly, I, I'm gonna say, I don't understand why we didn't have the link on the postcards that went out. Uh, you know, I can set up a zoom in like thirty seconds and, right? So I think that, that was um, uh, unfortunate that that didn't happen. So that then when they sent out these postcards that said, oh, check our website for the link. And then it, you had to go, you know, it took me twenty minutes and then I had to call Ronnie to say, where the hell do I get this link from? So.
It was a point well taken.
They need to just make it real proof and uh, very, very easy, so.
It needs to get fixed and I'm sure that it will.
Same thing happened to me too.
I needed to.
Same thing to me too, so yeah.
Stuck in the loop, got stuck in that, oh, online open house, click online open house, go to the webpage and there's no link at all. And then like you're stuck in this online open house page with no link, you have to go all the way back to the beginning.
That's one of the reasons why I made it.
I, I, I suspect that they can give us a, a one more open house for free of charge. And right, to make it right, cause boy, that made me mad, so.
Yeah, I was having difficulties too. And I made, uh, once I had difficulties, I just made sure it was posted on every social media outlet I could find.
Now, the numbers that we got, I heart saw higher about sixty-one uh, participants. Uh, which, yes, if it had been, I don't know if because it was difficult to get in, hurt that number or not. Uh, but we did have over sixty people who were involved in it.
That was awesome. It was a great.
Good numbers.
Yeah.
I think the interest is there. I think the interest is there. And I think uh, we're moving in the right direction, but we gotta fix these bugs.
Yeah.
So let's go back to Mike. Mike, you have anything else?
No, I think we pretty much covered it. Um, it's budget season, so we're working on budgeting and things of that nature. There's some uh, dates that throw out at you, just so you're aware. We'll look at doing a supplemental budget in April. We'll look at a budget committee meeting in early May on May fifth. And then uh, we'll jump into a budget hearing in June for adoption in July.
Okay.
Are there still openings on the budget committee?
Yes.
Yes, sir. I still have three. I have not gotten anybody interested.
Do we have anybody on the budget committee?
Yes, we do.
It's a couple.
Yeah, I have.
Volunteers?
I, I, unfortunately I have not had any volunteers yet. Um, we have three positions open, four are filled and four is the budget uh, committee uh, quorum.
Okay, and is this a city limits position or um, urban growth area?
A city only, I believe, is what the ORS.
Okay.
I believe.
Ernie, are you counting all, are you counting all the counselors?
No, so uh, total counselor with everybody in. No, so uh total counselors, with everybody in there, if everybody's position was full, it would be fourteen.
Okay, we'll do some recruiting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, when we had the last Edgewater uh HOA meeting uh that I attended, I mentioned it there, uh that uh we were looking for people to be on the budget committee, and Joe Casanova uh spoke to it. So, uh we'll keep uh beating the drum and see if we can get some people interested. I'm gonna uh knock on a couple of neighbors' doors and say, look, you guys need to get involved.
And surprisingly, I haven't had uh Lori Petrie put her two cents in yet either.
Oh, okay.
That reminds me, well, somebody, Ken, can you forward that email I sent out this morning about the COVID nineteen vaccinations to Joe? I don't.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I will. I'll uh make sure that we get that to him.
Okay, I remembered after I sent it, and then I didn't get around to looking up the email address later in the day.
Okay, alright, I'll I'll take care of that. Okay, Mike, anything else? Okay, uh, let's go around the horn. Jamie?
Uh, I'll be quick tonight, cause it's a holiday. Um, so, I attended the CPO four K right after our last one. And um, our last council meeting, um, I think Mike did an excellent job. Um, it was a lot of the same, um, but, um, I was pleased at uh, I was pleased that, you know, there was kind of an expansion of questioning. It wasn't just so narrow focused. Um, again, I think that we've done a really good job of explaining why people need to come back to the process and not create kind of these answering processes. And, um, you know, it just, it just is what it is. So, um, I thought he did, I thought Mike did a great job. I think we did a great job. I think it it, um, you know, it just, it was good. There was a suggestion that um, instead of building out towards Roy Rogers, that we take over the golf courses in King City and turn those into housing units. Um, and uh, that didn't go down very well. And so, you know, um, I was pleased that we weren't the only, like, um, enemies in the room after that point. So, um, anyway, um, and then, um.
Sorry to interrupt, but was that a joke? Or was the person serious?
He was serious.
They were serious, yeah. They're very upset because it was, um, so it was P, it was kind of, um, the Beabot Rivermead. And they were like, you know, why are you coming over my land when you could just take the golf courses and build on that land? And I do also think that there is a little bit of um, this thought process stuck in. You know, King City can only just ever be as busy, as as big as it can be. And that is just simply a fallacy, right? Like, people have to understand, we're not trying to create a new city for now. We are trying to, um, which we are legally obligated also to do, is to plan for the future. And, right, have uh plan for future residents. And so, I I do think that continuing to get the message across that, you know, some of the things that we're doing right now are really about long-term impact. And King City may not be a barrier at, you know, Roy Rogers. King City might take all of the entire eastern county of Washington County and become the largest city in Washington County in fifty years. I mean, we, we just have no idea. And so, I think, um, you know, getting that idea across that, no, our borders don't, we are not defined by our borders as they currently are now. And that's why it's important to continually figure out and innovate and, right, all of those things. Anyway. Um, the, this last, um, this last week has been exceptionally busy for me in my professional life. And so, that was, uh, I've been a little bit um, out of touch on some of the stuff for council, which I love. I have started the ball rolling to look at how um we could get a community garden in King City. Because I think that um, a community garden um is a much funner, more attain, more attainable goal than a dog park. Because I have some real questions about liability for a dog park. So, um, I'd rather just not deal with that right now and focus on a community garden. Um, I started the Emerge program. So, I had two days of super training with Emerge, which was great. I was really proud of um representing the city in that capacity. We had um Lacy Beatty, Mayor of uh Beaverton, introduced me at the kind of welcoming gala. And said nice things. And then, um, we had a kind of national trainer who was um part of Kamala Harris's uh kind of team and stuff. So, uh, it was very exciting, and I'm super looking forward to how I can uh bring some of this insight to King City and do all that, so.
Jamie, what is Emerge?
Oh, sorry, Emerge, if you think about, uh, Emerge is essentially a candidate incubator. Um, it, for the Democratic Party. So, basically, they train and um they teach uh women, uh Democrats how to um, to run campaigns, win campaigns, and serve in office. And so, um, although it's not a, this is a obviously a bipartisan, or, you know, a nonpartisan position. Um, I was, uh, I applied and uh became a, an Emerge um student, if you will. So, it's quite an honor. Uh, Shamia Fagan, who's the current, um, you know, Secretary of State, she came out of the program. And um, there's some uh real exciting leaders. Kamala Harris came out of the program, some, some big heavy hitters in the political sphere, Dave. So, I'm honored to be amongst them.
Okay, Jamie, uh Dave, you might as well go next.
Okay, um, I also had difficulty finding that link, and they waited till the very last minute to even post it. And uh, I think that's really unfortunate, and definitely need to do something about that. Uh, the presentation was good. Um, I thought it was pretty comprehensive. And uh, the questions were well handled. News item, I got my second COVID shot today, so I'm done. So, I hope you guys are. CPO four K meets again on the twenty-ninth, at seven o'clock on Monday. And uh, the, the one item that kind of caught my eye was Twalton River Keepers. I think Mike probably pretty familiar with them by now. Anyway, it's uh, what is it, a week from Monday?
Did you say seven o'clock, Dave?
Pardon?
Did you say seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock.
Thank you.
And it is a virtual meeting. I have the the Zoom link in front of me, but I don't, I don't know if you wanna copy it, do you?
Yeah, I can, I can save it if you wanna put it in the chat.
Okay.
So, they're planning to give a presentation, Dave?
Yeah, um, Twalton River Keepers uh presentation by Ashley Short.
Alright, yeah, I know.
I'll be there.
Uh, uh, did they say what they're going, are they gonna be talking about the expansion area? Is that what they're?
Well, I'll, I'll read you what they put in the uh brochure. With a focus on protecting and restoring the Twalton River watershed, the Twalton River Creeper Keepers. So, are involved in engaging the community, advocating, restoring, educating, and providing access to the Twalton River. Ashley will provide information about the Twalton River Keepers services and current activities.
Okay.
Oh, I will, can I, can I add one quick thing, Mayor? Which I just, so at the CPO four K, one of the things that I pointed out, which uh, which I am happy to put on record here, is the fact that we had just had the, right, because CPO four K is the week after our council meeting. And we had had the presentation about the expansion at our council meeting. Only one person from the Rivermead area and uh the opponent, uh, you know, a lot of the, the same people that we know are opposition to our plan from CPO four K even attended our council meeting. And so, one of the things that I did bring up at, at the meeting was the fact that, you know, I show up to their meetings. And, and they missed a great presentation to learn more about the very thing that they are upset about.
Right.
But didn't show up. And um, and just said, you know, it, I know we're all busy, but I, I thought that that was important to say. Mike and I switched roles. I really was the bad guy, and Mike was the, I was bad cop, he was good cop, which I think was good, and, right? I was feisty, I was a little feistier at that meeting, cause I'm just sick of it, right?
Yeah, I agree. Thank you for doing it.
The other thing is like, uh, you know, Ashley at uh Twalton River Creepers, was it, Dave? I like that name.
River Keepers, yeah.
She sent me uh, she sent me the uh layout that they had for um their proposal, their pitch. And um, they basically just don't want us to be anywhere near. They, they routed everything up to be thin. They cut off everything from, they had no access to Hundred Thirty-seventh Street. Like, just a big block of nothingness in between the Bonneville Power Lines and Hundred Forty-seventh. That's what they want. They don't want any pathways, they don't want any roads, they don't want any houses. And it's kind of like, I'm sorry, but that's not going to work.
Okay. Well, we'll stay on it, and uh we'll just see where we go from here. Okay, uh, Dave, were you finished?
Two other quick notes. Um, I got a uh probe from a resident about the Bexley paving. And uh, Mike, you're well aware of everything that's going on there, but just, just so you know.
That's the summer. Were they opposed to it, or what's going on?
Well, they're, they're just whining and complaining because it hasn't happened so far. And they don't even.
Had to get the ownership taken care of first. And I think we just got that last year, right?
How long did that take?
It took a couple of years. It took a couple of years to get all that done. So, you figured we had that in two thousand nineteen? I think we had the ownership by then.
End, end of twenty nineteen.
Yeah, and then nothing, nothing could happen this last.
Yeah, well, we had to do all the planning for it too, engineering, design, and planning. That takes a little while. So, it was hard to get it into last year's window, but this year's window.
Maybe we could get the uh homeowners along that little stretch there to uh give up a little of their uh frontage.
So, Dave, just so you know, Dave, just so you know, I have everything for road maintenance, uh, including Bexley on the website. It tells you the summer of twenty twenty-one, it's gonna be done. Good. Um, so you can send them.
Point them to that, yeah.
Yeah, you can point them to that, exactly.
Done.
The one other uh item, uh, I don't think that we have ever, we had a discussion in the council about the administration of the Highland trees, street trees.
Yeah, I remember that.
And we never actually uh put anything in writing. And our um, person that's responsible for the architecture and landscape handles that for the Highlands uh was asking if there is anything really in writing from the council.
No, not as of yet. Um, Keith, Mike and I, we are working on the tree ordinance right now. Uh, and that is uh probably, probably won't be on the agenda until August, honestly.
Okay.
But so much going on.
Well, just so it's some, you know, it's memorialized and uh, everybody where we're at.
I would say it's pretty much, you know, the Edgewater situation definitely brought it to our li, to a forefront in our minds on what we need to ensure doesn't happen. Um, with their proposal to remove every tree in Edgewater. Um, that was kind of a shocker, Dave. So, like, obviously, we thought the HOAs would be better managers of their, their resources. But um, seeing what Edgewater was proposing there was quite shocking. So, we need to figure out where the scale gets tipped and when we have to come in and say no.
Okay. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Uh, John?
Um, okay, what have I done? Uh, last month, I attended my first meeting for the WCCCA. I think I got that right. The Board of Commissioners.
Hmm.
And uh, it was pretty interesting. Um, Ernie was actually nominated to be uh a CEO. And, and it, I don't know, it, it's very confusing. Um, but I wanted to let Ernie know, I just got the agenda for tomorrow's meeting. And tomorrow, we're making a decision about whether or not King City is um able to nominate a CEO for that position. It's, it's something to do with us being a small city, and we don't have an equal vote. So, um, it just seems strange to me, but I have a lot to learn about it still, so I don't quite understand. I mean, it's all about money, right? It all comes down to money. But it seems to me like, um, if Ernie was willing to do this position, and he was literally the only one nominated, that it should be a no-brainer. But I don't run it, so I'm just, I'm learning. Um, and we also.
Exactly, exactly, right? Thank you. Thank you for that common sense nonsense.
And then I um, I also attended the budget meeting uh last month for, for them. And I'll attend it tomorrow as well. Oh, and last month, we went over the, the, there's a new director. Um, the current director is retiring. So, we were um approving the new director's contract and made some changes to that. So, it's pretty interesting work. I'm glad I'm learning a lot on it. Um, and the only other thing, um, last week, I attended a Zoom meeting with some of our legislators, um, including Courtney Neron, um, and Rachel Prusak and Dossia Graber. And uh, they were just sharing with us some of the highlights of the twenty twenty-one session and some of the bills that they're working on. So, that was really interesting. That's all I, that's all I have.
Okay, John, I thank you. Micah?
I'll uh, I'll keep it quick here. Um, we had our Small Cities meeting this morning, uh, or this afternoon, first time in over a year. So, that was uh nice to get that group back together. Um, as usual, it was only Estacada, ourselves, and uh uh, Marywood Park, or Maywood Park. So, um, it, it's sparsely uh attended, but a couple of things that came out of it that I did wanna let everybody know about. Uh, that elected officials training that the LOC does is now available online. Um, and it's available at any time. So, if you missed any of the um uh, of the actual meeting times, you can go and do that. And they do plan to do all of their, uh, have all of their trainings available online going forward as well. Uh, so that uh, if it doesn't work for people's schedules, they can still uh get the training that they need. Um, we will be hosting the Small Cities meeting in September, so something fun to think about uh for the future. Uh, we've done it a few times, and uh I think our, we have a good venue for it. Um, our CBDG meeting was canceled this me, uh, this month. Uh, we didn't have any topics. Uh, so, that's really all I have.
Okay, Micah, thank you so much. Kate?
All right, so, um, earlier today, Counselor Peterson and Rosenthal shared some of the stuff that I was gonna share. So, I'm really grateful for them for being able to cover some of that. I am gonna put some links in the chat. Um, so I attended the Metro Policy Advisory uh Committee. And what I learned is that we are not actually a part of it. So, our, I, representing us, we are alternates for the small city. So, I was there as an observer. It was very odd because I hadn't been to a webinar. It was very odd because I hadn't been to a webinar style like that before. And so nobody could see me, at least I don't think so. And I couldn't like participate or anything. And those of you who know me know that how hurt that probably was for me. Um, but what I learned is that we are an alternate for, um, I just totally, uh, the mayor of Forest Grove.
Uh, Peter Truax.
Thank you. And so if he is not in attendance, then I would indeed get to be on camera. But I would, could still attend and listen and learn. Um, so one of the things that, um, the counselors talked about earlier, let me just drop this link for you guys, is the, um, twenty eighteen bond. And you can find more information here. So they already talked about that. I don't really need to go over it again. One thing, um, that was very interesting to me was a report on, um, the emergency transportation routes around the metro area. Um, and how those haven't really been updated for quite a long time. And with some of the, the fire emergencies that we had and then, you know, same year, uh, ice, ice storms and those sorts of things. We really, um, were pressed to use some of those evacuation routes in this area as well. I'm going to drop a link for some of that work. Um, so some of the things that they talked about were the fact that these emergency transportation plans exist and they're being updated, but often they're not integrated into the emergency plans of other agencies. So for example, they might not be integrated into our city's emergency plan. I don't know, but that's, that would be a thing for us to keep track of and make sure that we are incorporating our regional emergency, um, transportation routes. They also want to go through and prioritize the routes so that there's like a triage system and, um, have a plan to better address vulnerable populations because there just isn't so much one right now. Like, do we get buses? Do we, what do we do? How do we get people where they need to go in an emergency? Um, but they want to explore using the rivers, um, using river routes for emergency evacuation or transportation. And also what to do, um, when we need to utilize, uh, or, you know, when we need to walk or use bike routes. So a lot of really neat stuff is kind of going into, um, re, re, taking another look at our regional emergency transportation routes. Um, we have civic engagement grants that Metro has. And I'm going to drop that link here. And these are very specific grants. These are grants that are for community-based organizations. I'm reading off the website, working to increase civic engagement in Black, Indigenous and other communities of color in greater Portland. So the idea here is that there are organizations that exist in order to help our BIPOC community interact civically. And the grants can go to them to help them further their mission. They're not in a position, um, the metro funding isn't in a position to do any like incubator money. So this has to be an organization that already is formed and has, um, has some history and has some other funding as well. Um, let's see, we talked a little bit about, oh, TriMet. The TriMet, um, general manager, they're, they're looking for a new general manager. So there were some, um, uh, listening sessions there. And, um, just the fact that, what is this? Oh, Greater Portland Inc. is, um, asking for some guidance from Metro on co, their comprehensive economic development strategy. And they're wanting to make sure that they're, um, talking about childcare when we're talking about economic recovery. And also, um, looking at things through a cultural and racial equity lens, engaging with the private sector and, um, how, and they have bi-state leadership. So they're obviously having to work with Southwest Washington as we develop all of this, um, economic, economic recovery. If, for those of you who don't know, Greater Portland Inc. is an organization that helps businesses who might want to come to the Portland metro area or Southwest Washington area, find a good fit for their business, like, like land to purchase and build on or somewhere to rent or what city or state, um, is going to work best for their business. So that's what happened at that meeting. And that's all I have.
Okay, and, uh, I am a member of the, uh, GPI, the Greater Portland Inc. We meet once a month, uh, in conjunction with, uh, the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium. Uh, so those are back-to-back meetings monthly. And all of you should know that they have a new CEO. Her name is Monique Claiborne. Um, have, uh, any of you seen, uh, any flyer or information on Monique? I have an email that I will forward to you. Uh, she's a pretty unique woman. Uh, and I think you'll find, uh, reading about her interesting. So, uh, she is, um, got a lot on the ball. So I will get that information to you. Okay, Kate, you have anything else?
That's it for now. I'll probably think of something while I'm trying to fall asleep tonight, but.
We always do.
Yeah.
You did good. Thank you so much. Okay, Smart?
Yes, I'll try to make it quick. Uh, so Mike, I did reach out to Sue Billings about the, the complaints we had the last time, uh, for customer coverage. And, uh, she did ask for the names of people that were experiencing issues. I don't know if you followed up with that, on that. So Sue Billings asked for names and addresses that way she can, uh, she said that's in her, um, in her office. You handle any complaints, so I don't know if I need.
Not after that initial set from the couple of people that had called in asking why they couldn't access it. And I think it was because Tiger sent out an information piece to participate. And then they couldn't participate because supposedly they're outside of their district.
Yeah, she, she's, she said, if we have any, um, any complaints, she, she had those are open, uh, to chat to her and she will help. I'm also attending the, uh, a special, um, water advisory board meeting on the tenth of this month. Um, just discussing the, what I shared with the, with the council about, um, at our last meeting. Uh, making presentation to City of Tiger, um, regarding water, um, uh, new rates and things like that. So, um, the meeting on the tenth was just to give the, the, the team, uh, a go ahead to present the proposed, uh, prizes to, um, to the, to the council. And, uh, that was done, that was supposed to have happened yesterday. And then the next step to, after that is, uh, a public hearing on April sixth. And that'll be the next, um, step in the process. And then on April fourteenth, the staff will be presenting the, um, twenty twenty two water for, uh, what a budget to the council. So that's the, that's the plan moving forward. So the city council was yesterday and this is, um, will be the public hearing. Um, again, not a whole lot because, uh, depending on the classes, uh, that's how everyone will see either, uh, a decrease in their prices or increasing their prices. But again, it's all about how much water is being used and things like that. So a lot of, uh, participation from the audience, uh, we had people participate in that, uh, meeting. And they had questions and then the group was, they were able to provide answers for them. So I think it was a good meeting. Um, let's see, yeah. I was also at the, um, the master planning. And I think the meeting was a very good one too. We had people, um, participate, I think that's, uh, giving them opportunity to participate and not, uh, say that they were locked out, you know, because, uh, if we don't do that, we just get, um, more people saying, we already have the chance to participate and now it becomes a problem. And we'll get into that cycle and we'll never get out of it. So I think it was a good meeting. Um, thanks to everyone for participating. And I think the, the team did a great job answering all the questions and being able to, uh, provide people the, the avenue if they really want to have a red discussions, answer that environment, you still take it up somewhere else. So I think it was a great opportunity for the city. Uh, let's see. I think everything else I have was covered by others that attended the meeting. So, uh, that's all I have to be. Thank you.
Okay, all right, I'll, uh, close this out. Um, now I've been sending you guys, uh, the updates, uh, on the legislative process, the bills that, uh, we are following as a Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium. Do you guys find that information of any benefit? Okay, I will, uh, continue. Go ahead, what were you saying, Jamie? You said yes?
I just said yes, yeah.
Okay. I, I, and I think it's important, uh, for us to follow and try to understand that as a group of mayors, we are, uh, doing everything we can to, uh, let our legislators know, uh, what support, uh, we are providing, uh, what we're in opposition to. And, uh, we had some really good meetings with, uh, many of the legislators, uh, which we have never really been able to do in the past, uh, as effectively as we are doing it now because we're doing it virtually. When we would have to drive down to, uh, Salem to meet with them, spend ten minutes and they were always seemed to be in a rush. It, it was not nearly as effective as it is now because we have them as a captive audience. And it's a designated time. And we tell them specifically where our concerns are and where our support is. And I think it's worked wonders. And I think they have learned to really appreciate, uh, the group of mayors, uh, standing, uh, in solidarity on a lot of these issues. So I think that's been a great benefit. So, uh, we've covered a lot, uh, it's getting late, but, uh, I will send you this information. Uh, in fact, there's going to be, uh, a presentation. Uh, they're asking, uh, to join, uh, them for, uh, meet and greet of Monique, uh, Claiborne, the, uh, the new CEO and president of, uh, the Greater Portland Inc. And that's going to be at one o'clock on Wednesday, March twenty fourth. So I will send you the information so you have that. And it would be great, uh, to join in if you can, uh, to get to know her a little bit better. Okay, so look, great job, everybody. Uh, you guys are doing a lot of great stuff. We got, uh, the staff is super busy with everything that's going on. But as we have always done, uh, things are in fact getting done. Uh, but, you know, uh, we will do everything we can to, uh, make these things happen as a team. And I love the way you guys have picked up, uh, the ball on your new assignments, uh, Shawna and Kate and, uh, the rest of you who, uh, you know, you're getting exposed to some of the other stuff that's going on. That's, uh, you know, as you say, it may not, we may not have a specific vote or a voice, but we're learning and we always have to have that seat at the table. There will be something comes up that will come up that is going to be important to King City and you will be there to hear it and respond to it. So, uh, I think it's of great benefit what you're doing and I truly appreciate it. So with that being said, happy St. Patty's Day, you know, and all of that. And we need a motion now to adjourn.
Smart, I put a message in the chat window for you.
Say, I moved to adjourn. Say, I moved to adjourn. Okay, never mind. I moved to adjourn.
Turning to like J V O'Brien.
Right? Are you at the office?
Yeah, at the office.
Yeah. Do we have?
Yeah, well, let's close this down and talk.
Okay, did I hear a second?
I didn't hear a second.
Shawna seconded, Shawna seconded.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 And bye. Okay, guys, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Bye.